Thank you. Good afternoon, West Orange. Today is September the 5th, 2023, and I am your council president, Tammy Williams. I am calling this meeting to order at 5:04 PM. Madam Clerk.
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the Township Clerk's Office on November 23rd, 2022, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on December 1st, 2022. Councilwoman Castellino? She's not arrived yet. Councilwoman Geber Michael?
Present.
Councilman Rutherford?
Here.
Councilwoman Scarpa?
Present.
Council President Williams?
Present.
Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and its citizens, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The council is now in their public meeting.
Thank you. I move that we recess the public meeting and go into executive session. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
I was gonna do a roll.
You're gonna do a roll call? Okay.
Uh, Councilwoman Geber Michael?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpa?
Yes.
Council President Williams?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you. And noting for the record, Councilwoman Castellino is en route, and for the executive session until her arrival, she will be available on sale. Thank you. Good evening. I move to restart our public meeting. We will end executive session and start the conference agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded that we will go back into our conference agenda. Is there any objection? Hearing none, the conference agenda will now begin. This evening, we will begin our conference agenda with a presentation on prostate cancer. Hi. October. October is Prostate Cancer Awareness Month, and we would like to introduce a presentation. If you'll just give me a moment to introduce to you our speaker. Right, so obviously, I do not see your bio that Mr. Bonzino sent to me. So I'm gonna ask you to just give us a brief introduction of who you are, who you work for, as you start our conversation this evening.
Sure. So I'm Dr. Gregory Mullen. I'm a urologist at Cooperman Barnabas Medical Center over in Livingston. Tonight, I'm just gonna be giving an update on some prostate cancer awareness. It is Prostate Cancer Awareness Month. It's the most frequently diagnosed cancer among men in more than half the countries in the world. In the United States, about 200,000 men are diagnosed with prostate cancer every year. And in 46 countries around the world, it's the leading cause of death among men. In the United States, it's the second leading cause of cancer death. Thirty-three thousand men died from prostate cancer in 2019, the last year we have statistics for. The median age, so about the average age that a man's diagnosed with prostate cancer is around 66. Fortunately, prostate cancer is typically a slow-growing cancer, so if you're gonna die from prostate cancer, it takes about 14, 15 years. So if you're diagnosed at 65, most men will live about to 80. There's a lot of risk factors for prostate cancer, probably the strongest risk factor is a family history. So if you have a dad, a brother, a cousin, you're about twice as likely to have prostate cancer. So really important that if you do have that family history, you're talking to your doctor about that. Race is a very important risk factor. So black men are disproportionately affected. And it's for a variety of reasons, including biology, which unfortunately, we can't change. And we know, you know, our residents are over a quarter black, so something to definitely be looking out for. There's also other genetic implications. So if there's women in your family with a history of breast cancer, the same gene, BRCA, that we hear about all the time, and breast cancer is also associated with prostate cancer in men. And again, something to talk to your doctor about if you do have that family history. Fortunately, there's good screening tests, which we couldn't say that about 20 years ago, so it's as simple as a blood test now. If you've ever heard of the PSA test, it's a nice screening test for prostate cancer. It's not perfect, though, but it's as simple as a blood test. Your doctor can do it with your routine blood work on your annual physical exams. And depending on what the result is, we kind of go down a decision tree of whether to pursue further testing. Ultimately, the only way to know if you have prostate cancer is to do a biopsy. It's not the most comfortable, but it can save someone's life. And now, there's a lot of good evidence that even before doing a biopsy, you can get an MRI. Same MRI you get for your hips, your knees. You sit in the machine, and it will give us a lot of detail, so that if you do need a biopsy, now we're not just blindly biopsying your prostate like we used to, even so much as five years ago. Now we have a picture that we can go off of to try to see where the prostate cancer may live. That being said, even if your biopsy comes back with prostate cancer, there's different severities of prostate cancer, so we grade it on a scale of one to five. One is the least aggressive, five's the most aggressive. Fortunately, most cancers are the less aggressive type of cancer, and that's where you see men living sometimes 15, 20 years with prostate cancer. So we like to say prostate cancer is a cancer that you die with, not necessarily from. That being said, the flip side is there are aggressive cancers. And the only way we know that is with certain tests and biopsies and such. Since we started testing for prostate cancer 20-ish years ago, we've seen that the likelihood of dying from cancer has gone down significantly. There's been a lot of controversy about whether to do these screening tests like PSA, but it's, you know, now been similarly seen in the light of a colonoscopy. And you don't see anyone really arguing about getting your colonoscopy every so often. PSA blood test is a similar thing. But again, it's not perfect. There's some side effects like anything else in medicine, so it's definitely something you want to talk to your physician about. As a urologist or the ones that are doing the biopsies, any doctor can order a PSA blood test, your primary care physician. But if it's abnormal, or there's a question that it's abnormal, it'll usually be sent to a urologist, which is what we can help with. Like I said, extremely, extremely slow-growing cancer, but one that if we catch early, there are very good treatment options. And a lot of the time, you can be cured. Some patients now are even catching with prostate cancer, and we tell them, you know what, we don't even have to do surgery. You don't need radiation. You don't need chemotherapy. We can just keep an eye on it. That's how indolent or non-aggressive some of these cancers can be. Again, the flip side is some cancers are more aggressive, and you do need surgery or chemotherapy or radiation or whatever it may be. But again, that's a conversation that you have with your urologist, your primary care doctor. But all in all, the message, I guess, for this month with prostate cancer awareness is especially men, you know, starting around, now we say 45 to 50, you want to start having that conversation with your doctor. Hey, I heard about this blood test. Should I be getting this? If you have a family history, we say, you know what, maybe start a little bit younger at 40. If you have a family history of breast cancer with one of these genes, again, 40. We know for sure, black men, you want to have that conversation when you're in your 40s. And that's something that going forward into your 50s and 60s, we continue screening. And then usually, once you hit your 70s, a little bit later, we can stop screening again. Most people, once you hit 65, your average life expectancy is only 15 to 18 years. And if you're diagnosed with prostate cancer in your 70s, it's most likely not gonna shorten your life. So the harm of doing a lot of these tests, we say, you know what, it's not worth it once you hit 70, or if your life expectancy is about 10 years, so. That's it. If you have any questions, I'll hand my cards out. You guys can distribute it in whatever newsletter goes out. And just make sure you're talking to your doctor. Talk to your brothers, dads. Make sure if you have a family history, that's probably one of the most important risk factors we look for. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Doctor. So we have a proclamation that we want to read to recognize this month. And the proclamation reads, whereas the year, this year, approximately 288,300 men will be diagnosed with prostate cancer in the United States alone, one man every two minutes, and roughly 34,700 will die this year from the disease, about 3,500 more than 2020, which is one man every 15 minutes. And whereas in New Jersey, an estimated 9,460 new cases of prostate cancer will be diagnosed, and an estimated 730 deaths will occur in 2023. And whereas men with relatives, father, brother, son, with a history of prostate cancer are twice as likely to develop the disease. And whereas prostate cancer is the most commonly diagnosed cancer in American men, and the third leading cause of cancer death behind lung and colon cancer. And whereas one in eight men are diagnosed with prostate cancer in their lifetime, and one in six African-American men will develop prostate cancer in their lifetime. Overall, African-American men are 1.7 times more likely to be diagnosed with, and 2.1 times more likely to die from prostate cancer than white men. And whereas veterans who were exposed to herbicides like Agent Orange are at an increased risk for developing prostate cancer, and are more likely to have an aggressive form of the disease. And whereas education regarding prostate cancer and early detection strategies is critical to saving lives, preserving and protecting our families, as well as the economic and social burden of prostate cancer is huge on families. And whereas if caught early, prostate cancer has a five-year survival rate of nearly 100%. However, for late-stage prostate cancer, the five-year survival rate is 31%. And whereas many more men will be diagnosed in 2023 at a lighter stage because of delayed screenings and treatment due to COVID-19. And whereas all men are at risk for prostate cancer, and we encourage the citizens of the township of West Orange to increase the importance of prostate awareness and screenings. Now therefore be it resolved that Mayor Susan McCartney does hereby proclaim the month of September 2023 to be Prostate Cancer Awareness Month in the township of West Orange. Thank you.
Interesting facts.
Very interesting facts, and certainly the concept of how it impacts black men is prevalent, and we need to have those conversations. Perfect segue for our health summit this Sunday. But next on our agenda is the presentation for our tax department, so that we can discuss so that we can discuss the community reevaluation process. And I'd like to introduce Jacob Niemann, our tax assessor, for those who may not have had the opportunity to meet him.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for letting me speak today, counsel. I appreciate the opportunity. West Orange is going to be undergoing a revaluation in the coming year. This is the first revaluation since 2011. It has been ordered upon us by the Essex County Board of Taxation, using guidelines established by the state of New Jersey. Frequently, there are a lot of questions and concerns that come up during revaluations, because it's a generally infrequent process. Our office is here to address those and hopefully calm some nerves about this process. A revaluation is a program undertaken by a municipality to adjust the values of all the property in town to match their present market value. The goal of this is to rebalance the tax levy such that those whose property is most valuable is paying the largest share. Revaluations are conducted to ensure that the tax distribution is fair and equitable across the municipality. They're done with the assistance of an outside firm, in the case of West Orange, PPA, assisting throughout the process. Fair market value is simply the value of your property. If that's a business, that's what it would transact for on the open market. If that's a home, it's what you could sell it for, where you'd stick a for-sale sign out front in the yard. The values are set as of October 1st pre-tax. Because West Orange's revaluation will be taking effect for the 2025 tax year, the values we're seeking to establish are for 2024 as of October 1st. October 1st, 2024 will be the date of valuation. The state has guidelines informing county boards of taxation when they must compel towns to conduct revaluations. The primary guideline is when the values of assessments are below 85% of their fair market value. The state of New Jersey has determined that West Orange's assessments are at approximately 78% of their fair market value. Accordingly, they ordered the Essex County Tax Board to order West Orange to conduct this revale, this revaluation. As I had mentioned previously, this last occurred in 2011. As mentioned previously, PPA has been contracted by the township to provide valuation and inspection services. They're gonna be collecting data throughout the township over the next year and a half, as well as providing information about the property market, real estate market, et cetera. The biggest commitment of time and energy of this process is data collection. Real estate, as we all know, relies on a lot of different factors in determining its value. But one of the major ones is what's literally there, the sticks and the bricks. PPA and West Orange have contract, have, will have a number of representatives doing data collection throughout the township. They're going to be knocking on doors, seeking to inspect property, both business, residential, and exempt your churches and schools and that sort of thing. Each data collector, each inspector, is going to be readily identifiable, and their information will be on hand, both in the Township Assessor's Office, as well as available via the non-emergency number from police dispatch. The inspector will be able to provide a letter informing you of why they're there, as well as photo identification. Please, please, please require any individual seeking to enter your home to provide this proof of identification. And if you have any concerns, call the township. We want to make sure this is a safe process. Do not admit anyone who cannot provide that identification. Additionally, those inspectors will not be the ones setting values. They are simply there to gather information and gather facts and figures about the home or business. During these inspections, during the revale process, interior and exteriors are inspected. This is to determine condition, as well as physical characteristics of the property. What buildings are present? What features do those buildings have? Is there a pool, et cetera? The exterior of properties are photographed. Interior photographs will not be taken. Property sales, as well as other data, are analyzed to determine what an estimate of the fair market value is when the property has not been recently sold. So if you've lived in your home for 10, 15 years, they don't have sale data saying what your home is worth. So they'll look at similar homes in the area to determine what that value is when those homes have sold. Commercial property is valued via the income approach when the cost, sorry, when the sales comparison approach is not deemed appropriate. And all of that is analyzed, reviewed, both by PPA, as well as our office, as well as the assessor's office. What is expected of those whose property is being inspected and revalued? Please, help us and let us inspect your home. We rely on good information to fairly and properly value your home. If your home has not been touched in recent years, you've been meaning to repair that boiler in the basement, but you just haven't gotten around to it, that is good information for us to know. But we're not gonna know it unless we get in. PPA is gonna make numerous attempts to reach out to you. Letters have been sent out throughout the municipality, informing you that inspections are gonna be starting. They will be knocking on doors, and if they're not available, they'll be leaving a note saying when they'll be back. They'll also be able to take appointments weekdays and on Saturdays. Any additional information you may have, say you have a radon issue in your basement, that is valuable information for us to fairly value your property. Send that to us or send that to PPA, so we can be sure to review it and account for it in your property's valuation. All of this allows us to fairly assess your property. When inspections happen, there's a few key bits of information that they'll be looking for. They're gonna be looking for the number of bedrooms, the number and types of bathrooms, so whether it's a full bath or a half bath. They're gonna be looking whether you finished your attic or your garage, but also whether there's a pool in the backyard, or if there's a deck out back. On the exterior, they're gonna be measuring the property. When we can't get into every property, the only fair way to assess how big a home is is by exterior measurement. They will be measuring that way, and that's how your square footage is determined. However, personal property is not accessible. Things like grills, fences, or even solar panels are not something that are counted in these assessments. If you're not home, the revale firm will leave a notice saying that they've visited, and they'd love to talk to you. They'll note when they'll be back, and if not, who to call to make an appointment. Residents are generally most concerned about how this is gonna impact their taxes, and we wholly understand that. A revaluation does not necessarily mean a change in your tax bill. A revaluation is primarily a rebalancing of who is carrying the tax burden. The change in your assessment is not necessarily related to the change in your tax bill that will come out in 2025. That's because the tax rate may change, and that's because your assessment, as it relates to the rest of the municipality, may mean that your bill could go up, stay the same, or go down. Since not all values change at the same rate, bringing all properties to 100% of market value will not impact properties in the same way. All residents will be noticed of their assessment in the fall of 2024. They'll have an opportunity to speak with the revale firm if they have concerns about that new assessment. They'll be able to provide any more information. They may feel as relevant. They may be able to provide context or sales of properties that they feel may not have been considered. The impacts of the assessments, however, do not come until 2025, when your tax bills mailed out in the summer. If you've met with the revale firm, and you're still dissatisfied with your assessment, and you do not feel it reflects fair market value, you are able to file an appeal. You're able to appeal that value to the Essex County Board of Taxation, just as you are in any given year. When you appeal or speak to PPA, you should bring evidence, evidence in the form of comparable sales of properties like yours and what they've sold for. You want to tell a compelling story as to why the assessment is not accurate. If there's incorrect data, bring photographs. Show that the data is incorrect. This covers the appeal process. Appeals are required to be filed by May 1st of 2025 to ensure that you've appealed the assessment in time. If properties are assessed over $1 million, they are able to appeal directly to state tax court. However, any property under $1 million, assessed under $1 million, must appeal to the County Board of Taxation. If you have any concerns about the revaluation process, you can call PPA, who's running the revale, or of course, the assessor's office. Happy to answer any questions from the council, whoever may be, and answer, yeah, of course, Councilwoman Castellino.
Great, thank you. That was very informative and very descriptive. So my question for you, that was for the residents. What happens if you're a commercial property owner? I know our downtown business owners have reported back to us that they have received a letter, and they also have to comply with some information that you were requesting. So my first question is, for the commercial properties, is there a Google Doc that they could? Because it's a lot easier for business owners to do a Google Doc response.
Understood. So the letters sent out were requesting income and expense information. Commercial properties are frequently valued via the income approach, so a determination of the value stemming from the income of the property, derived from the property. The forms required are not available electronically. They're a state-promulgated form, and they're only able to be filled out as-is. But I also understand that business owners frequently have their income and expense data in other formats. We'll take that, too, if that's far easier for them, because as long as it provides the same relevant information about that, that's gonna be helpful to us in determining a fair value for their property.
Okay, thank you. I may have you come to a board meeting of ours.
Certainly, yeah.
To explain it.
I'd be happy to.
Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Any more questions? Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, we have passed the 7 o'clock hour. Let's do some council liaison announcements briefly, if there are any updates. Councilwoman Scarpa?
No, you know what, thanks to me.
Councilman?
In light of the time, no, thank you.
No updates.
Councilwoman?
We'll be making some announcements or some downtown activities for a fall festival we're putting together for next month. But I just want to take two minutes to thank Ospac and also our Recreation Director. They have provided great programming for our residents this past summer. Just the other night, there was a movie night up at Ospac that was enjoyed by many young children, and a good time was had by all. So I just want to thank them for all their efforts, for what they do for our residents and our youth of the township. And I just want to congratulate and wish him well, Mr. Hayden Moore, our new superintendent, that he's kicking off the school year today with his teachers, and we're really proud of him, and we hope for a successful tenure. So I just wanted to wish him well. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. So as I mentioned really briefly earlier, on Sunday, we will host our inaugural Health and Wellness Summit at the high school. We have over 40 different vendors lined up. We are being supported by Cooperman Barnabas Medical Center, Montclair State, the Mental Health Association of Assets and Morris Counties, the Mental Health Association of New Jersey, the Housing Foundation of the Oranges, as well as the West Orange Health Department, and the Mayor's Wellness Campaign. We will have screenings, testings. The mobile van from the county will be there with doses of flu vaccines and the extra potent flu vaccines for our senior population. We just were able to fund screenings for vision, and we will be able to give 100 students from the West Orange community free vision testing with glasses included. So this is just going to be a wonderful opportunity for all residents of West Orange, all ages, to come and receive free medical services at the high school on Sunday, beginning at 11:00 a.m. until 3:00 p.m. We have 13, 14 different workshops scheduled throughout the day, as well as different demonstrations and presenters. So we look forward to the West Orange community coming out and supporting this event. So we look forward to the West Orange community coming out and supporting this event on Sunday. In addition to that, I just wanted to make sure our business owners are on the lookout for what's coming down from PSENG, which is a business energy saver program, which also includes direct installs for equipment to help make your business more energy efficient. So please stay tuned. The Downtown Alliance will also be supporting the rollout of this program. But again, it is designed for our business community to receive different discounts and direct installs to lessen their PSENG burdens. We have our planning board meeting tomorrow, and please just take a look at the website on the westorange.org for additional meeting dates on the calendar for September. Keep it in mind, we also have Green Ribbon Week, we have Suicide Prevention Day, which is also September 10th, and suicide prevention is celebrated, recognized, and awareness for the month of September. So we'll have more on suicide prevention at our next meeting on the 19th.
Excuse me, Council President, I just want to add, I did want to not state it. I just want to thank you, Council President. The other night, we had the small business information session, having the state come in to inform our business owners about small business loan grants. And it was very informative and very well done and thought out. So thank you for organizing that. And I know our small business owners were very appreciative of that. So thank you.
Thank you for that acknowledgement. Okay, I will enclose the conference agenda, Madam Clerk.
Is there a motion to reopen the recessed public meeting?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, this is to inform, oh, I already did that at the beginning, so I don't have to do that again. So invocation.
Invocation? If I can please have Rabbi Mendy to the podium.
Good evening, Council President, members of the council and residents. Thank you for this great honor. Almighty God, Master of the universe, those who are meeting here today to fulfill one of the seven commandments which you issued to Noah and his family after the great flood, the commandment that all societies be governed by just laws. As stated in the Book of Genesis and its sacred commentaries, God issued at the time the following seven laws: to worship God and God alone, never to blaspheme God's holy name, not to commit murder, not to commit adultery, not to steal, lie, or cheat, not to be cruel to any living creature, and that every society be governed by just laws based on the recognition and acknowledgement of you, O God, as a sovereign ruler of all humankind and all nations. Grant, Almighty God, that the council president, members of the council, and our residents constantly realize that by enacting just laws and regulations, they are doing your will. Almighty God, I beseech you today to bless the council president, members of the council, and all who are here today, and also the entire nation in the merit of our good deeds. Grant, Almighty God, during this special year of Hakel gathering, commemorating a once in seven years biblical event of unity and spiritual growth, that the members of this council be cognizant that their gathering here today fulfills a sacred purpose. And let us pray in the words of King David in the Book of Psalms, chapter 122, "May there be peace within your walls, serenity within your mansions." May it be your will, Almighty God, that the tireless efforts of the council president and the council member be successful, empowering all the individuals in this great township to be decent human beings, considerate of others, reverent to you, O God, and ready to do their part towards the ultimate goal of making this world a better and brighter place for all humanity. As the Jewish New Year is upon us, I ask Almighty God to grant us all a happy, healthy, and sweet New Year, and may we be sealed and inscribed in the book of life. Together, let us say amen. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we will begin our public comment. If there's anyone in council chambers that would like to have public comment, you can simply raise your hand as you approach the podium. Please identify yourself with your name and your address. Yes, please come forward.
Karen DeAngelis, I live at 200 Mount Pleasant Avenue here in West Orange.
Can we turn the air off, maybe? It's so loud.
Karen DeAngelis, I live at 200 Mount Pleasant Avenue here in West Orange. Well, two things.
Ma'am, you have to speak up. You have to really.
Because I was looking for a listening device. This listening device I was given to doesn't work. So I can't hear what anybody is saying up there. So, and this is the second time I've been to a town. That there's, you don't have appropriate listening devices. Anyway, the reason I'm here is because.
Can you repeat your name, please? Your name and address?
Karen DeAngelis, 200 Mount Pleasant Avenue in West Orange.
Thank you.
Recently, I received a copy of my lease, which I'm supposed to renew by September 1st, October 1st. And what's happening is this, the management is now going to be charging us for water and sewer. And we're here to find out if that's a legitimate a legitimate fee, because it's an apartment complex and there are no meters, no water meters in our apartments. As well as when I called the public utilities today, they indicated that to check with town council, because if there's a, you know, you can only raise the rent here in West Orange 3%. And if there's a rent ordinance like that, they may not be able to charge us what they're going to charge for sewer and water. Now, the other thing is, they, in my lease, they haven't even told me how much I'm going to be charged. I'm going to be charged $5 a month for a billing company to bill me, but they still haven't confirmed how much I'm going to be charged. So I haven't signed my lease. They're saying it's going to be according to square footage and number of people in the complex, in the apartment. So I'm one person, and does that mean I'm going to be charged the same as somebody who has four or three or four people in their apartment? So what the rent, public utilities indicated that to check with the town council to see what, is there an ordinance that they can't do this? The other thing is, is next April, I was told, and it's in the lease, that they're going, it's mandatory that we join the pool. And that's always been optional. Is that something that this management company can do to those of us who don't join the pool? I can't join it because I'm allergic to chlorine, and I've lived here 18 years, and I've never joined the pool. As well as next year, they're building a gym, and that's something they're going to make mandatory. There, many of us are senior citizens. I work out at a different gym. They could not ever have the kind of equipment that I need at a larger gym in this little building that they're going to put the gym in. So that's my concern. I have two other people here who live in the complex. You guys want to say?
Just one second, just one second. Are you, I want you to complete your comments before you yield your time. So before you.
The issue is, what is it that the council? For us? Is there anything that can be done? Is this a legitimate charge for us? I mean, they gave, in my lease, they gave me an example that comes from somewhere in California from 2015. You know, it's just unconscionable. And the problem, I think, is a lot of them want to get us old timers out so they could raise the rent, you know. A lot of us have been there over 20 years, so we're at 3%. So if somebody else new comes in, they can charge them a lot more than what we're paying, you know. And is it, you know, is it possible that they could actually charge us for, make us join a pool? You know, when we don't want to do that. So what is the next step? I mean, do you get back to us? Do you call them? What do you do?
Okay, thank you. So what we'll do is we'll give everyone an opportunity for public comment, and then we will respond to all of public comment at the end.
Also, I think you need to get better listening devices, because it's very difficult to hear.
Certainly noted, not a problem. Thank you. Yeah. And I want to apologize, Mr. Fagan typically leads us in public comment, and I jumped right into our members of the public. So I want to go back to Mr. Fagan for his announcement.
Thank you, Council President. I'll make my announcements very brief. I want to start out this evening with something that I'm repeating about hiring crossing guards. Apparently, running these ads has been very successful, because we've had a great response to the need for crossing guards. But I'm putting the information out there to the public that they should contact Kate Davenport by email at admin@westorange.org, where they can contact me. But this is a crucial component to our community, and so we are still looking for crossing guards. I also want to mention crossing guards and a related matter, of course, schools open tomorrow, September 6th. It's hard to believe we're in September already and schools are opening. And the mayor asked me to just put out a reminder about the rules concerning stopping for school bus. On a two-lane highway, vehicles must stop in both directions, and the same is true for multi-lane vehicles traveling in both directions, most stop, must stop, even if there's a center lane divider. The only exception is a divided highway. Vehicles in the same direction as travel of the school bus must stop. And in the other lane, vehicles should proceed with caution, but are permitted to pass the flashing red lights of a school bus only on a divided highway. And as you know, there are fines and points for such violations. I also want to bring up, a resident had pointed out on social media that their garage door keypad was up, unexplained, and they reported leaving it down. And I spoke to the chief, and the chief said that there are no reported cases of entry through garage doors, but that it's possible that somebody might be checking and just pushing enter to see if the door opens. In some cases, it's the entrance to a house. But I would suggest to residents with this type of garage door keypad to heed the excellent point and make a mental note as to what position you leave a garage pad in. And if there's any suspicious activity, certainly report it to the West Orange Police Department. As you know, we've been having a problem with burglars entering the house looking for the key fob. In today's technology, that will start the car, as you know. And, you know, it's been, it's been mentioned before, but it's worth mentioning at this point. If you see something, please report it to the West Orange Police Department. Just don't post it in a Facebook group, because it ultimately helps protect the safety of the community. We have a, I think was mentioned, a virtual planning board meeting coming up tomorrow. We also have on Thursday, Mayor McCartney's open office hours. No appointment is necessary. You can just stop in and chat with the mayor, come in and discuss your concerns and ideas. This Saturday, we have Old Timers' Day at Colgate Field for 2023. Batting practice starts at 12:00 noon. There's a reception to follow. These are the honorees, and this information is listed on our website. The barbecue will take place at the Ginny Dunkle Pool. Of course, there's no swimming. The pool, I believe, is closed. As was mentioned by Council President, we have the Health and Wellness Summit coming up. But there's also some additional, very valuable information. This is on our website. And this is a timeline that shows you the various workshops that are going on. And rather than read through this list, as they say, it's available on our website. But, you know, there has been a lot of concerns raised in the community about cannabis. And there are two workshops here that specifically address cannabis. So I would suggest any residents who might have concerns to consider attending these seminars. There's also screenings on site, I believe this was mentioned, and there's different, various facilities performing those screenings. So this is going to be a big event, and it's all focused on our wellness. The question that is often raised, and this was sent to me by Executive Director Megan Bill, where do I park downtown? Well, there are seven parking lots downtown, and I was supplied with this list of the seven parking lots. And this is available on the Downtown West Orange Alliance website. And this is important for the simple reason that it gives you the addresses. Knowing the name of the lot is great, but if you're looking for it on GPS, you want to know where the address is. So these addresses will serve that purpose. And if you're surprised, you can find parking information and more information on the Downtown West Orange app or on their website. And if anybody has any questions about anything seen here tonight, you can counsel, you can email the council@westorange.org. That goes to all council members. And if anybody has any questions, this is the slot I meant to address, that they can email me or call me, and I'd be glad to supply them with specific information and answer specific questions. But as they say, all the information is available on our website at westorange.org. Council President, thank you for your indulgence. That concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you. Anyone else in council chambers? Yes, please, Ms. Lefkowitz.
Phila Lefkowitz, 703 Pleasant Valley Way. If the walls in this chamber could speak, what would the ghosts of West Orange past say about the stewardship of the modern roads that ramble through our town? Faced with a choice about our road issues, do we choose to go down Action Way or Inaction Boulevard? First issue. Do we actively object to our state government's guidance to stand down when bad actors drive ATVs and muscle cars down our roads and congregate in our parks and parking lots to do stunts and tricks? Or do we remain at ease? At our last town council meeting, I requested that the council make an ATV ordinance. Seeing none, I've taken it upon myself to research what other towns have done. Tonight, I'm presenting Belleville's ATV resolution and inserted West Orange information. I'm requesting that one of the council persons on this dais read the resolution into the record and vote to send it to legal. It's not just ATVs on Pleasant Valley Way. There are muscle cars. Who knows what will be next? And the drivers are bad actors. They gather in parks and parking lots, and people have reported seeing them drinking whiskey from glass bottles and smoking cannabis before they parade on our roadways. Reportedly, these bad actors have left skid marks in one of the parking lots while doing tricks and stunts. Is this what we want in the parking lot of our new target location, or for that matter, at any location in our town? Does someone's 911 trip to the hospital have to end in tragedy because of road blockage or mischief from these bad actors? Or must we wait for action after a tragic crash that kills an innocent motorist or pedestrian? Second issue. Do we repair hazardous roads in a timely fashion as promised? Or do we ignore this? Tonight, two new bond ordinances for capital improvements are being discussed, 281323, 281423. But neither mentioned streets in my Pleasantdale neighborhood, namely Cleveland, Hoover, and Lincoln. Why are our streets being ignored? After fixing these roads some three years ago, patches are weakening, and there are erosions causing safety hazards, vehicle damages such as suspension strain and tire damage, and a dangerous path for pedestrians. On behalf of my neighbors and myself, please make sure that these streets that were included in Bond Ordinance 277123, that was recently voted down due to the concerns about the budget, be addressed before entertaining approval on these new capital improvement ordinances on first readings. Per Tina in Engineering, the design for the project has already been completed, but we are waiting for the council to approve the 2.5 mil- but we are waiting for the council to approve the two-point-five million dollars in funding. The quest of the repairs for this group with Cleveland, Hoover, Lincoln also includes Chestnut, Mount Pleasant, Lancaster, Normandy, and Manchester. It's my understanding that PSENG has to fund some of these repairs. Have we received that money? And if so, where is it being held? And if we don't have that money, how do we obtain it? It is not tolerable that no one from Engineering has been at our meeting for months to address these issues. When we grow old, what will we say when we sigh and we reflect upon the past? We have real choices that need to be made. We need to pick a lane and choose wisely. Time is of the essence. The decisions we make about our roads have real consequences and there is just no going back once our inaction causes tragedy. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, please come forward.
Good evening. My name is Maureen Robinson, two hundred Mount Pleasant Avenue, apartment J seven. Here in West Orange. When I moved into uh West Orange, I'll say about three years ago, um, I detected some problems and some issues. And I spoke to them, spoke about those issues with the agency, uh with Mr. Smearl, though, your leveling board. And I don't see much difference now. Now, I put in fifty-four years in the education system. In about two weeks, I'll be eighty-two. So I'm wondering why is there still a difference in certain situations? And I'm here, I'm gonna ditto Karen. My rent was twenty-two hundred dollars. And then the next month, fifty-dollar um moni- uh water bill. Now, there are no meters to determine who should pay how much. Now, I pay downstairs, I was paying the fifty dollars. One person, just me and my dog and Jesus. Upstairs, four people were living over me. They weren't paying a water bill. I just believe in the theory that if you don't stand for something, you're fault for anything. I march too many and too many marches with the best of them for us to be going through the unfairness, even in housing still and still going on. Okay, so I just wanted to come support uh the issue that we're here raising, the unfairness that's going on. Okay, my time is behind me. I'm not worried too much because I know where I'm going to spend eternity. But I would like to just rest here, have a little peace. I like living up in the mountains. I do. Okay, but it's not, it's not always as you would want it to be. But I thank you for listening and God bless you real good.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Yes, please come forward, sir.
Thank you. My name is Robert Sipster, eighteen Garfield Avenue, West Orange. I've lived in my house since nineteen ninety-one. Uh, the house is the corner of Hoover Avenue and Garfield Avenue. Um, I've had interactions with the uh Department of Public Works several times since two thousand and twenty-one about repaving the streets. I remember getting a letter from the town and from PSENG stating that in an appropriate amount of time, in a proper amount of time, they would be able to repair the streets that they opened up to place the gas lines and then eventually water lines were placed in as well. Uh, we live down a big hill coming from Cleveland and when it rains, it really, really rains and the water washes out a lot of the temporary work that the Department of Public Works have basically uh tried to uh patch up the streets. I won't even consider repaving my driveway until the uh street gets done because there's a hole in front of my driveway every time it rains. That being said, in two thousand and twenty-one, I called the town to find out when it was going to be done. And I was told I called a little bit too late. The asphalt uh manufacturing plans were closing down. It wasn't on the agenda. They said, no problem. You and several other streets are high on the list and this will likely be done in early two thousand and twenty-two. I called in two thousand and twenty-two in the beginning of the summer and they told me, no problem. It's going to be done in two thousand and twenty-two before the fall. I called maybe August time and I was told there was no funding, even though it was very high on the list. I had then called again in two thousand and twenty-three, again, the Department of Public Works. Uh, they're very sincere and they basically told me, you're very, very high on the list. It's going to be done this summer. I reached out to them at the end of July, early August, and I was told that uh there's still not any funding for it. They told me to call back again in the middle to end of August, which I did. And I was told that the people I'm talking to right now, five to zero, voted against uh funding this project. So my question, you can uh you could definitely, you know, give me, you could clarify this for me. But I was told that PSENG provided funding for this project, at least to some extent. I was also kind of told by Mr. Gross that most of this funding was already used to pave other streets. I don't know if that's correct or not correct, but I would like clarification on that, too. Um, it sounds to me that this is not going to be done in any kind of timely manner or way. And this is only one of the seven or eight streets that you folks have very high on your list to repave. Again, why did you send out that letter in two thousand and twenty stating that it's going to be done promptly if there was no plan to do that? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in council chambers? Yes, Ms. Morelli?
Rosemary Morelli, excuse me, uh Ralph Road. I'm here to talk about something that's a really uplifting situation after all we've heard tonight. Uh, several weeks ago, we had the Rat Pack up at the Ospac Center. It was this song Frankie Valli sings, Oh What a Night. And that's what it turned out to be. It was a mix of oil, a lot of teenagers, young adults, us all folks. We all blended in together. The evening was perfect. We need more of that, but this is what seniors need. It was a way for them to get out of the house and socialize and scarpet and what's your name again? See what happens when you get old and forget names. Now, Michelle, uh arrange for transportation, door-to-door transportation on a bus. And I'm going to tell you, that's great. I belong, I'm a member of or the vice chair of the Essex County Senior Advisory Board. And Joe D gets a bus and they practically come in our house and take us and put us on the bus. And when we get home, they take us back in our houses. So this was a really um inspiring evening. And there were so many young people who probably weren't even born when Frank Sinatra and the other guys were, you know, the rage. But it was a perfect night and it should be the start of this kind of event and this kind of caring and catering to. I know that's not really nice. There are other people, old, young, and whatever, but catering to us. We we feel valued. We share stories while we're sitting there talking, the socialization. The evening was a beautiful evening and the entertainment was great. So thank you very much, you guys, especially for the bus.
Thank you, Ms. Morelli. Anyone else in council chambers? Yes, please come forward.
Good evening. My name is Violeta Quzan and I live in forty-three Mid Street, West Orange.
Can you please spell your last name for us?
Q U I Z A N.
Thank you.
I just found out that they're opening a store next to my house. It's a cannabis store. It's very close to the school. And I was talking to this guy and they said, and I asked him, what kind of cannabis store is this? Is this medicinal? And he said, no, it's recreational. So what kind of store is that gonna be very close to the store, to the school? And kids are going up and down the streets. What, what, what prevention can we do? They told me that, oh, they will have police all over. There will be cameras all over the building. They will not let the people who buy the the ma- the drugs go in our street. Once they buy this, the drug, they will, they won't be able to go in. But who knows who, maybe the residents could go in there and buy something. I'm just so afraid that this is so close to the school. There's two schools that's not too far, Edison and West Washington. Well, how can we prevent this, let's say, adult guys buying the drugs and giving it to the young kids? How can we prevent it? We have seen it all over the place. They will be just like putting in their pocket and slipping it to the little kids that they don't know what they're getting. It could be at the beginning, it will be like taste good like candy. And what's next? I'm so afraid that we'll see kids lying on the streets, just like what happened in other other towns. That's my concern and I hope you could help me to prevent the opening of this store or whatever prevention we could do. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Sam Jacobson. I also live at two hundred Mount Pleasant Ave. Um, I'm just here to support my neighbors. I I feel the same way as them. I had not gotten a letter. Uh, I'm waiting to get a letter when I have to renew my lease. Every year, they're raising the rent on us three percent at at a minimum. They've tried to re- uh raise it more and we had to fight them. I'm very worried about them building a gym and then also charging us for the pool. Um, it's me, my wife, and my daughter. We're not like, if we were wealthy, we'd be living in one of the luxury apartments across from Turtle Bag Zoo. These are supposed to be affordable apartments and they are pricing us out. Beyond that, these are people who, I literally spent four days without hot water. On Friday, our hot water heater just stopped working and the whole weekend, I was not able to give my daughter a bath. She's fourteen months old, okay? I had to go all the way to my in-laws. Thank God, I live close to family, but it was ridiculous. And it's not like anybody from the company showed up to or even sent an email saying, we know and we're sorry. We put a message in the portal like they always tell us to, nothing from them. This is not the first time this happened. Two years ago, when we had that freak snowstorm, it was October, November. We also had a hot water, we were in a different building and it broke. This was after months saying, we don't have hot water. Come on, then come off, come on, then come off. They don't listen to us. They don't care about us. If they build this gym, they're going to price us out. They're going to price all my neighbors out who are living on fixed incomes. We have a such a nice neighborhood and community. We're like, I'm happy to raise a daughter and I'm just really scared that's going to go away because this company is just going to destroy that. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Norma McClendon and I live at two hundred Mount Pleasant Avenue, K one.
Okay, thank you, Ms. McClendon. I'm sorry.
I receive my lease, but when I do, I will not be paying for a gym because I belong to a gym. I will not be paying for the pool. I've lived over there more than twenty-seven years and I never joined the pool. The one year I did, my cousins, they come over from New York. Well, you couldn't even go to the pool. Talking about hot water, we just been through that in K. And I argued with the lady the day and she told me the maintenance man was a plumber. I said, he's a licensed plumber? Because he not licensed, he not a plumber. You mean he's gonna make some repairs? But for four days, because I called them Thursday, Friday. I know they're not gonna be there Saturday. But I called them anyway. We didn't get one until today. To today. I can't go in to my relatives' house because they live in St. Louis, they live in Detroit, they live in Chicago. I have some in Mississippi. I'm not going to their house to take a shower. I shouldn't have to. I pay my rent on time. So I don't think they should be. I think that's just a sneaky way to go up on the rent. How can they make me join a gym? Is this not America? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hi. Um, my name is Lauren Smith. I live on two hundred apartment K nine. I've been there since twenty fifteen. I moved up from from Montclair to West Orange. And the positiveness about West Orange is when your daughter tells you this is a diverse community from Montclair and enjoy the school system. And it was just positive coming from her as an adult. We just move where we move and we live where we live. But when your child tell you this is a diverse community, she started going to kindergarten in the metro. Since I've been living there, the rent has been going up every three percent each year. And it's probably, it's difficult. And I explained to um the person who manages everything, I said, if you're working and you don't get three percent raise on your income, it's very difficult to catch up with your rent three percent each year. But sometimes you make sacrifices. We do a balance. Balance meaning that it's a nice community, it is quiet, it's peaceful. When the um the owner sold the property to another company, who on earth would put a trash can, build a trash can? Who would? Would you put a, build a trash can in front of your home? That should have been something that should have not happened, two trash can in front of a building only because they did not want to pay for somebody to pick up the trash that next to our bend. Now you have rodents. And I can tell you, I walk in the morning, I don't need the gym that they build in because they can't keep up with the laundry. I'm the one who cleaned the laundry with bleach and before I put my washer in so that the laundry has been cleaned by by the by the tenants. There's rodents all over the place. So instead of them making sure they hire someone to pick up the trash, we have more raccoons. This building, now they have more dogs and humans. They have dog feces. I had to step on a dog feces and then wipe the mat and throw my mat away because I'm not going to clean it. Another issue is the hot water issue. That's been an ongoing issue. Um, I emailed and told them that the hot water was cold, it's sporadic, it's not consistent. I explained to her, how are you gonna charge me for water bill when I have a daughter in college? That she's only there in the summer. And then how are you gonna charge me for water? How much am I spending for water? How are you gonna manage that bill? I am not interested in having a pool being mandatory. I'm in an agreement with my daughter, we'll do it every other year because of cost. It's only me and her and she's not always say that's two hundred and something dollars I have to pay for the pool. Um, so the 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 thing is, the thing about it is that I don't, I believe in my humble opinion that the reason of the rent and what they doing there is that I think they are, my opinion, I don't know if this is true. They're accommodating the New Yorkers, people who are leaving New York, coming into this apartments. They're accommodating those people and we're the ones who've been living here for quite some time and making sacrifices. They, I think it's just pushing us because they know they can get, instead of the price that I pay for my two-bedroom, two-bath for my daughter, that switches over the same price for a person with one bedroom. I believe they're actually doing this increase, um making that move to make people uncomfortable. So they move. Where do you move to? I've been looking and the prices are still high. I think they should have some restrictions. I think they should consider, and I spoke to the person there. If you have the tenants who are ma- managing the apartment, keeping the area clean, those are the people you want to keep. The um the people that are coming in now, the other company used to vet, making sure, uh before I even moved there, I had to show proof that I could have paid my rent. I had to write a letter and tell them I was in school. I'm 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 gonna pass my board exam and do all of this to prove to them I could pay. And I was a single parent doing that. Now, isn't anybody coming there? There's smoke. I can't stand on my porch. If they really wanted to build something, that little, the money that they spent to build two trash cans in front of a building, they could have stood it and do a smokehouse. So everybody who's smoking cigarette can go in the little smokehouse so that I can sit on the porch and enjoy the fresh air. There's cigarette vets all over the place. People have little alcohol bottles that drop it around. The sanitary and the upkeep in the environment is no longer there again. It's not what it used to be. And and to increase that rent, I think it has a lot to do with residents coming from New York and keeping up with the high inflation that we have right now.
Thank you. Is there any, yes, please come forward.
Sharon Yedwab, 23 Cleveland Terrace.
Sharon.
Yedwab.
Can you spell that for us?
Y E D W A B.
Thank you.
Magic words, Cleveland Terrace. I think you've heard that mentioned by Sheila Lepfowitz. There's a few people here who only just found out about the meeting this morning that it was going to talk about the road situation. If more people knew, this place would be flooded. And we all vote. Why should we vote if our needs aren't met? It's not fair that our street along with the others mentioned are not paved properly. On top of that, I now hear that other streets who weren't paved will be paved and ours still won't. So it's not a question, it's just in support of everything that's been said. We need our roads paved. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in council chambers for public comment? Mr. Fagan, how many people do we have on our internet Zoom audience this evening?
Yes, Council President, there are, excuse me, there are 57 attendees in the Zoom audience and currently six hands are raised.
Thank you.
Um, Mr. Paglisi from Essex County, please uh, uh, share with us what you have this evening.
Uh, good evening. Thank you for giving me the opportunity this evening. This is Anthony Paglisi, representing County Executive Joe DiFincenzo. Uh, just want to share a schedule of some upcoming events. Of course, on September 11th at 8:00 AM in Eagle Rock Reservation, we're having our annual Essex Remember Ceremony. Uh, the public is invited to attend that. Uh, then on Saturday, September 23rd, from 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM at the Essex County Environmental Center in Rose Lane is our Fall Family Festival. Uh, it's a great way to welcome in the new season. Uh, we do have a lot of, of environmental partners who've joined with us that day uh, to promote their programs as well. Uh, and then on uh, Saturday, uh, October 7th, uh, from 8:30 AM to 4:00 PM at our Public Works Facility in Cedar Grove is our Household Hazard Waste Collection Day. And then on Saturday, October 21st, from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM, also at our Public Works Facility in Cedar Grove is the um, Computer and Electronics Recycling Day. Uh, as always, all this information is on our website. And uh, thank you for the opportunity tonight.
Thank you.
Joy Church of God, welcome to the meeting. Please state your name and address for the record.
Uh, it's Bishop Douglas H. Adams, 9 West Over Terrace. And uh, I don't use my titles very often, but based upon my comment tonight, I think it's very appropriate. I'd like to thank Rabbi Mindy for his service to the town and the service of his congregation. Um, I have been um, meditating on my last visit to the town council meeting and typically I leave after the requested service that I'm performing uh, is over. But my wife asked me to stay to hear the council comments. And in the process of that, I was very um, disheartened um, by uh, our council. Um, I served in the United States Navy for seven years. Committed that seven years of my life to defend the Constitution of the United States and to make sure that those who either did not have the mind or the availability to serve could serve our country in other ways while I sacrificed being away from my family. I've served in ministry for over 30 years. I spent several years in downtown Chicago ministering to young men and women who were involved in gangs in some of the most severe areas of Chicago, including Cabrini-Green, the largest at the time, public housing complex outside of Poland. And so when I was asked to come and do the invocation, I've been in West Orange for almost 27 years. And I've done invocation and benediction at other town events. Um, not because I petitioned to, but because I was asked to serve. And just like uh, in situations where the mountain was sliding down when 9/11 came, when the young man over in the um, neighborhood was shot, um, when town leadership asked me as well as other of my fellow clergy to show up, we show up. And we encourage and we support. And we serve in whatever way we can. And the town council and the administration over the 27 years that I've been here have openly sought out our support. And so when simply serving in a way that I've been asked, and I commend the council president for initiating the invocation because of the climate and to use your terms, um, those of you on the council, the temper of the meetings, I was not only willing, but I was excited to do that. And I understand that there will always be people, residents within the town, who will have different feelings about that and I'm cool with that. And in an attempt to be respectful in my invocation, I tried to be inclusive of that, that everyone does not live life with the same faith premise that I live. And they don't always, some don't even live their life based upon a faith premise. And I'm cool with that. I spent most of my young life as a riotous sinner. So I'm in no place to judge anyone. So when they had comments said that what I did was un-American and unconstitutional, it was my expectation that the response of the council members who first gave an oath to defend the Constitution invocations have been upheld by the US Supreme Court and not just invocations as in prayer, but sectarian invocations. When the council member said that they support everything that that person said, I felt unsupported as a resident. I felt disrespected as a veteran in the military. And I felt dishonored. Because the statements were that what I did was unconstitutional. And if I remember your oath, it was to defend the Constitution. The statements that were made was that it was un-American. And I would appreciate some understanding about that. And I would hope that the typical political screaming bomb in a, or fire in a theater did not distract any of our leadership to the place where what I had to say didn't matter. Thank you, Council President, and thank you, Council, for hearing my concerns.
Thank you. Mr. Fagan.
Lisa Stedwell, welcome to the meeting. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, this is Lisa Stedwell, 42 Chestnut Road. Um, I was just checking back in on um, Ordinance 277123 um, for the status of the repaving. And did you want to?
Yes.
All right, and one more thing, hold on.
Uh, this is Lisa's husband Lloyd Rodriguez, 42 Chestnut.
I'm sorry, I, I couldn't hear your name.
Oh, Lloyd Rodriguez. I'm Lisa's husband.
Thank you.
I think same address. My concern is um, about the reassessment of the homes. I think it's going to happen sometime this year. So in the news, we've been seeing a lot of uh, cases where black and brown families' homes have been undervalued when they've been reassessed. And since we're getting a reassessment, I would be really concerned if it could go just the opposite way, be overvalued. You know, I, I like to have a valuable home. It's a nice home. I just hope it doesn't be overvalued. And then I'll be hit with uh, sewer tax, increased tax, and then uh, reassessment tax. Otherwise, that road is very valuable to my house as a, a good road is like a new pair of shoes for a home. And if I'm going to get hit with taxes, at least I have a new pair of shoes for my house so I could hopefully get my money back. You know, you know, to if I have to move, you know, because it's a lot of tax. So I'm hoping that uh, a good, you know, thorough vetting of whatever company's going, or whoever is doing the reassessment of the homes, you know, is not someone who's crooked. That's pretty much it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. And well, Ms. Stedwell.
Uh, John Blanton, welcome to the meeting. Please state your name and address for the record.
Can you hear me?
Yes, please continue.
Yeah, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Uh, just want to open by saying that uh, as elected officials-
Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Sure, apologies. John Blanton, 54 Fox River. And again, I just want to say good evening to everyone. Uh, want to open by saying that as elected officials, uh, you have an obligation to listen to the residents of the township as well as each other. As my family and I continue to watch the meetings, not only the lengthy time that you guys spend arguing back and forth with each other without any type of decorum, uh, we're starting to take on in our township what appears to be like the climate uh, that is happening nationally throughout our country. And it's not good. And so let us also be mindful that we shouldn't be divided by faith. There's only one God, um, and we all worship one God. Uh, in the last council meeting, uh, it was mentioned that any budget should reflect your values. And I agree with that. When you review a budget, it should clearly exemplify what your priorities are. It looks as though our priorities are increasing our sewage, our property taxes. A gentleman just mentioned the revow and I would like to echo what he says that I hope that as a person of color, um, from looking at some of the things that have happened in other places in the country when properties are being revowed, or when people were going out to remortgage their properties, that we're not underestimated or overvalued uh, in our properties. Uh, I'm also concerned uh, from being uh, a part of an environmental injustice cleanup. Very concerned about what's happening at the uh, DWP, PDW, I'm sorry. Uh, and that cleanup and the amount of years that it's taking to find out what's going on. And based on where it is, uh, I'm also concerned about um, environmental injustice that may be occurring in that area uh, as well. I want to echo what Ms. Morelli said about our seniors. Uh, I want to read something uh, that is from the Department of Senior Services. The Department of Senior Services program and use the umbrella of the World Health Organization, eight domains of liability as the guidelines for addressing the needs of the senior community. And the domains are traditionally listed as follows, but each community can adopt the focus and number of the domains as needed. And these are the eight domains. Outdoor spaces and buildings for seniors, transportation, housing, social participation, respect and social inclusion, work and civic engagement, communication and information, community and health services. And as I echoed in our, uh, the last meeting, um, I see that there's an item on the agenda tonight uh, that's pending and I'm hoping that we're looking at uh, doing the things as uh, exemplified by the World Health Organization uh, for our seniors and aged adults uh, in this community. And lastly, uh, I would like to know what is Lenny Lepore's status with our township? Thank you very much. Thank you for your time. Have a blessed evening.
Thank you, Mr. Blanton.
Phil Litwinoff, welcome to the meeting. Please state your name and address for the record.
Certainly, Mr. Fagan. My name is Phil Litwinoff. I live at Lyndon Avenue in West Orange. Uh, part of my comments I'm going to defer because it seems like our township attorney, Mr. Trent, has decided to walk out on a meeting. And part of my comments are directed to him based on last week's uh, meeting.
Just a correction for the record, Mr. Litwinoff. Mister, Mister Trent is present. He just was not sitting in the front, but he has not left council chambers.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
You're quite welcome.
Thank you. So the first thing I wanted to do though is to thank Mr. John Gross. At a previous meeting, I asked a question about library uh, savings due to the closer, closure. Uh, did not get a response. I sent Mr. Gross an email which he responded to the next day. We had a conversation. He was very funny. When he said, I'm probably not going to like what he says, but he's going to tell me what he knows and he did. And I'm now waiting on Mr. Kobe from the, uh, the library uh, uh, board in order to respond to the rest of it. But I wanted to reach out and thank Mr. Gross for his immediate response to my question. Uh, in turn to the other comments I've got. I sat through the first hour and a half of last week's town council meeting that was discussing various uh, ordinance proposals. The first hour and a half of that meeting was spent on talking about fast food and drive-through restaurants. First of all, very facetiously, I want to thank Mr. Trent for putting me back into my eighth grade environment where people would make fun of my name. Because that's what eighth graders did. And by his comment, absolutely uncalled for, referring to our Green West Orange as our green whatever, I would think that he should be looking at his own paycheck to make sure that West Orange is listed on it. It's insulting for him to have taken that statement. The second comment from Mr. Trent is that you, sir, overstepped your role as the township attorney. You actively participated in the commentary and discussion about the uh, the Target complex. And you made comments that were absolutely outside of the area of your role as legal counsel to the township, and I object to that. As to the discussion of the the planning board proposal for this development of the Target Center, I want to remind both Councilwoman, Council President Williams and Councilwoman Castelina, you are very smart women. You understand certainly because of what you do professionally, the legal and uh, real estate side of business. Yet you both made comments last week saying you will not do anything to upset Target in this application. May I remind you both that Target is not the applicant to the planning board in this proposal. Target is nothing more than a LSC who, as I understand it, has already made major investments to make this work. And I would submit to both of you is that Target really doesn't care if there is a fast food slash drive-through slash however you, other semantics you want to call it in that property or not. Target, I will remind you, has their own grocery store, which will be in competition with Whole Foods. Their problem, not the township's. I will submit to you, they, that they would probably prefer not to have any further competition from fast food slash drive-through slash casual dining slash however it gets called within this thing. We have the ability to do what is right for the townspeople of West Orange with stopping further development of these types of restaurants. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Litwinoff. Mr. Fagan.
Sally Malanga, welcome to the meeting. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Sally Malanga, Ridge Road. I'd like to start out by saying religious invocations at town council meetings are not appropriate. It's an imposition of religious beliefs upon those who have no such beliefs and makes those having no religious beliefs feel uncomfortable. Council President, I am requesting that you discontinue religious invocations. If you wish to sue the residents and fellow elected officials, collaboration and responsiveness would be a alternative behavior. I admire those individuals on the council who conduct themselves by putting the public first. I wish to thank three council members, Susan, Asmaret and Bill for championing three good ordinances. A good tree protection ordinance, a prohibition on the pollution from gas-powered blowers, and a ban on fast food. and a ban on fast food. Not having these protections in place constitutes a harm to our community. These ordinances correct a harm. The residents understand from numerous discussions and comments that council members Tammy and Michelle do not support these good ordinances. We also see that Tammy is delaying action on them. We do not need to hear more discussion about them. Each council member's position is clear. For those members of the public who did not attend the workshop on these ordinances last Thursday, August thirty-first, those that did witnessed our township attorney advocating for a fast food restaurant in the West Orange Plaza, whereby law, fast food restaurants are not permitted. Nevertheless, our Green West Orange members are asking our responsive council members to act vigorously, bringing the three ordinances to a vote so we can show the residents that beneficial actions needed for West Orange are possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Erica Fromkin, welcome to the meeting. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Erica Fromkin, Stanley Road. Uh thank you for letting me speak. I've never done this before, but I wanted to talk about the Target Center on Prospect and Eagle Rock. I grew up in this town in the sixties and seventies, and I just moved back, well, not just, but in two thousand and seventeen. I would like to voice my objection against any new fast food establishments in our town and that the ordinance that bans new fast food restaurants should be brought forward and voted on. Um I'm now living back on Stanley Road with my husband, and I'm not really sure how that shopping center got to be in the condition that it is because it's such a a prime location um with my family being in real estate. I kind of know a little bit about the business, but anyway, um we're all here to make West Orange the best that it can be. Um one of my biggest concerns is that there's so much nature and wildlife around here in general, but especially um at the reservation. Uh proof of that is I was turning onto Woodland Avenue from Terrace in the afternoon about four thirty, and a family of deer went running by, which we see all the time in our neighborhood here, and it was right at the top of Woodland and Prospect. Um that's probably very close to the height of rush hour, and Prospect right now is a nightmare going either way um after three o'clock in the afternoon, and now that school has started again. Um I don't think anybody's against Target um or redesigning the existing space that's already there. I mean, Whole Foods was awesome. Um I think um I think Pathmark was there before, and I love how the county used Kmart during the pandemic. It was really well organized and convenient and helpful. Um the space needs to be developed, but not overdeveloped. The roads can't handle it. Um we have three exits off of two eighty close by. We have Eagle Rock Avenue that goes from one tent, one end of the town to the other. We have Pleasant Valley Way, which goes from one end of the town to the other. Woodland Avenue, which is a massive cut through from Pleasant Valley Way to Prospect. And it it's just um traffic is already a nightmare on those roads, and we want to know, or I want to know how the county and the town is going to handle the mass traffic that will be occurring if this gets redeveloped the way the town wants to, especially with the fast food, which is not going to make the traffic worse, but it will make emissions and the wildlife and all that. Anyway, that's pretty much it. Um I think that we need to know more information about how the town and the county are going to handle the traffic on our small roads that are already massively overcrowded. Thank you.
Thank you.
Claudia Sanders, welcome to the meeting. Please state your name and address for the record.
Claudia Sanders, Old Salem Road, West Orange. Uh I was planning to speak about this topic tonight before Bishop Adams spoke, so this isn't in direct response to what he said. Uh and I offer my thoughts tonight without any intention of disrespect to anyone. One of the definitions of an invocation is the summoning of a deity or the supernatural. I want to reiterate what I said about this practice at the last council meeting. I just don't think it's appropriate. I don't have anything against religion. I'm a member of one myself, but I don't believe it has a place in a public meeting, especially in a community as diverse as ours. Uh I didn't say the invocation is un-American. I don't think. I don't remember saying. It's not not my words um that I would normally use. And um uh Councilman uh Rutherford acknowledged that it is not against the Constitution as it's used in prayer breakfasts in the Senate, for example. But I think there's a principle here that's really important. Um for those on the council who support the practice, I'm wondering if you could explain the purpose of bringing religion into a public meeting. Um as has been mentioned, three council members have already said they're not in favor of it. So I wouldn't take the time up to ask them to respond, but um I would really like to hear the rationale from your perspective, since I assume mid uh Council President Ms. Williams and Councilwoman Ms. Castellino must be in might be in support of it since you didn't say otherwise at the last meeting. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Joyce Rudin, welcome to the meeting. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, good evening. Uh this is Joyce Rudin on Woodland Avenue. In the last council meeting, I addressed um the issue on prayer. A lot of people have again addressed it tonight about the council president's decision to continue this practice when the council majority voiced last time that they were against it. My opinion does not waver on this issue because a rabbi has delivered the opening prayer. In our pluralistic society, prayers at meetings of local legislative bodies inevitably cause some community members to feel isolated or excluded and divide communities along religious lines. They may be permissible, but this is a bad idea. If a local legislative body seeks to open a meeting with a moment of solemnity, perhaps you could have a moment of silence um where where pub the public can pray silently or or meditate. Um I think that's a more appropriate alternative. What I would like to address tonight is what took place at the special council meeting last Thursday, much of which was well said by previous um speakers. First of all, I am not clear why both Mr. Trank and Mr. Jengar were present at that meeting. Why were there two attorneys? Were we the taxpayers of West Orange billed for both of them to be present? And if so, how much? I'd really like an answer to this question. Second, Mr. Trank's behavior throughout the meeting was not in keeping with the role of the attorney for the township. His job is to provide legal guidance, yet he was actively lobbying for the developers of the West Orange Plaza and intimidating the public and council members. Without any proof whatsoever, Mr. Trank suggested that a target, a future leasing of the complex would pull out if two fast food restaurants were not granted permission by the planning board. It has been said earlier this evening that Target offers its own food. In addition, it will have a Starbucks. Why would they want competition, both in terms of parking and food sales directly in their front yard? Why is the township uh lawyer lobbying so hard for this to happen? What does he have to gain from this? I'd also like to recommend the public that to to remind the public that tomorrow night, there is a planning board meeting where this issue will be uh addressed in depth and where the um applicant's um architect and perhaps traffic engineer will speak, and I hope the public that is concerned about the fast food option at the plaza comes out tomorrow. On another note, it has been said that um about Mr. Trank's response to to our Green West Orange. It is my understanding that the township attorney, in addition to representing the administration and the council, represents the residents. As a member of our Green West Orange, which has a thousand plus members, it is derogatory and offensive for Mr. Trunk to address our group as our green whatever. Our Green West Orange residents, pay your bill, Mr. Trank. We deserve courtesy, not your pugilistic stance towards residents who are working to make West Orange safer, cleaner, and more transparent. On another note, a tree ordinance crafted by our members with the guidance of the majority of this council, members of the Environmental Commission and the Town Forester, was placed on the public agenda online for that last special meeting. Yet at the council's special meeting, an alter an alternate tree ordinance drastically modified and greatly weakened by the administration, not the one presented to the public for review, was the one up for discussion. Mr. Trank immediately justified this subterfuge and sleight of hand, completely ignoring the version submitted by a council member. The legal department received the tree ordinance in advance. The town clerk presented it on the agenda. I request that the ordinance collaboratively written with members of the public and township leadership and properly channeled through the legal part legal department be voted on for first reading tonight. There are rules of decorum and procedure that this council and administration are bound by. I ask that Mr. Trank follow those rules. Thank you.
Hussein Ismael, welcome to the meeting. Please state your name and address for the record, and I'm sorry if I mispronounced your name.
Is me?
Yes, sir. We can hear you. Please continue. Please state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, uh my name is Hussein Ismael. I live in Sixth Rosney Terrace, West Orange, New Jersey.
I'm sorry, could you repeat your name and address?
Hussein Ismael. And Sixth Rosney Terrace, West Orange, New Jersey.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm uh uh trying to voice my opinion to the council. Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to allow me to speak and uh present my concern about uh a development uh that is being discussed now uh through the planning board and the zoning board. And they propose Sonic Fast Food and Babi, right against my my uh my backyard, against the fence. And the the design has twenty-two violation or twenty-two variances of ordinance and zoning requirement. Uh the most glaring one is you should not put uh construct a fast food development uh in residential area less than one thousand feet away. That development right against my fence. And also there should be uh a buffer zone between that fast food development and residential develop uh residential area no less than twenty feet. That buffer zone in their design proposal was one feet and fraction of feet. He made the uh the uh I raised my opinion about this twenty-two zoning variances to the uh zoning board council in one in the meeting, one of the meetings. I attended three meetings. And lord behold, uh the engineer came in for the second meeting, I think it was a couple of months ago in July, and basically ran through all this twenty-two violation uh zoning board um variances. And uh unfortunately, the uh at that meeting, the council did not allow participation of the public. The following meeting was somewhere in August. They have postponed it or canceled it. And there is a future one. Yeah, I think this month, on the twenty-eighth of September. We're hoping it will be heard for for the fairness of the process and how we interact together and in issues that has the diverse effect to me personally and my family the most and the entire neighborhood. Um where in general, we oppose uh any development of fast food restaurants in our neighborhood because it will cheapen the value of the homes, the surrounding homes. While the taxes are keep rising up, uh we'll we'll have a loss in both ends, in the higher taxes and lower value of our homes. Plus, the uh the traffic that going to be created by such a development will be horrendous. Uh and um like some members have pointed out, uh West Orange Avenue and Eagle Rock Avenue, yeah, it's very congested as well uh as is. And um in the engineer, I read some of the engineer report when he did his uh traffic study and um in a year of COVID, which you all know that COVID basically, you know, uh had people underneath hiding their homes, and you can barely see anybody driving or walking. And he made this study as uh as a point to make that there is no such heavy traffic uh as is and will not create heavier traffic, which is not true. And then is another uh a lie or misinformation presented that we have uh twenty-five uh mile per hour uh sign, the speed limit, that does not exist. And right the block before me and at the intersection of uh proposed fast food development, the uh the driver is going, if if you would say thirty-five to forty-five, you're being very modest. You're going fast. And these cars going in and out-
Your time is up.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Ismael.
Emra Altukaya, welcome to the meeting.
Good evening.
Please state your name and address for the record, and could you kindly spell your last name?
Yes, uh Emra Altukaya. Um I will decode it, my last name, Alpha Lima Tango Uniform November Kilo Alpha Yankee Alpha Altukaya, fifteen Fundus Road, West Orange.
On this?
On this road, yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would also like to express my opinion about the um the proposed fast food restaurants uh at the West Orange Plaza and also in the vicinity, which is also uh next to my neighbor, uh Hussein. Uh I also live uh uh in that vicinity, uh only three uh on the third house behind that now proposed Sonic and only, you know, so far away from the West uh Orange Plaza. Um I'm not sure if, you know, uh people use that, you know, uh you know, vicinity uh for, you know, going to their, you know, houses, you know, driving through, but the current traffic at the Eagle Rock and Prospect, you know, avenue is already becoming, you know, overwhelming at, you know, certain hours, you know, especially rush hour. There was all all the CVS there, and there's this proposed target which is going to replace Kmart, so it's already going to bring more traffic to it. But then adding more, you know, buildings, new buildings uh add to for fast food, whatever, you know, however you you define it with drive-throughs is going to just make it, you know, um you know, almost impossible to move. Um I understand that, you know, um the township, you know, would like to bring more business, which is going to be uh good for tax revenue. Uh but however, sometimes, you know, uh the quick, you know, fast dollars that you might be thinking might actually cause more, you know, uh uh spending down the road. Uh and it may not be uh easy to undo these mistakes, you know, in the long run. So um unless you guys are, you know, uh uh going to plan, you know, uh alternate, you know, uh roads up and down, you know, the existing roads to uh increase uh the lanes. Um I I don't understand how you can, you know, uh uh bring actual business, you know, which will then actually uh will fail because the traffic will be so bad that people actually will, you know, uh uh will not like to come there. So it's going to be a disaster, you know, uh unfolding. And the other thing is the security that these, you know, uh additional fast food restaurants will actually uh require. Um out of the personal experience, you know, actually, um I sometimes go to charge my car at the uh the Wawa um by I eighty in Lodi, just uh off I eighty, which is very similar to our situation there because it's we are off I two eighty. Um on a Friday night, I was, you know, trying to charge my car, and most of the uh charging stations were actually uh occupied by, you know, regular cars. and most of the, uh, charging stations were actually, uh, occupied by, you know, regular cars with modified cars, uh, making all these engine noise and exhaust noises, you know, on a Friday night, all these, you know, uh, teenagers, which I'm not against, but, um, it was so crowded, there was actually not just the local police from Lodi Department, but also sheriff, sheriff departments, you know, cars were there to make sure that nothing, uh, um, was, you know, getting out of control. I have seen a couple of teenagers opening the door, you know, of their cars and throwing up. So, uh, this was happening around ten PM on a Friday night, uh, I couldn't charge my car and then just leave. Uh, but the thing is, uh, now you're, you know, asking for additional police, police presence, you know, in that area. Um, I believe that's going to, you know, increase the cost for the town. So, you know, the taxpayers are going to, you know, uh, pay for this, uh, for maybe a few extra dollars, which may not be enough even to cover the expenses that the police department is going to actually encounter. So I'm asking, uh, to make sure that you, uh, are thinking thoroughly. As one of the, uh, neighbors actually, uh, said, uh, that place is actually a very prime location. And I understand that. So I'm sure that it will be alternative, you know, uh, business, you know, uh, opportunities, uh, uh, business, you know, um, proposals that will still bring the revenue that, you know, the town is looking for, but not bringing these, you know, uh, extra costs. Um, so please do not, you know, uh, rush into making decisions. Um, and if you look into the, uh, neighboring town Montclair, they took years to decide what's going to go for the La Cava Plaza. Uh, because they know that that's going to cause a lot of, you know, traffic. There are, you know, people living in the area as well. Yes, that's a prime location, but they also put their people, um, first. So we have to, I mean, I'm not saying, you know, uh, we have to do exactly what our neighbors are doing, but we have to look at the principle that they're acting with, which is, uh, we, uh, the township, uh, the, the mayor's office, the, the council represents the people first. And we, the people are saying that, please don't do it and hopefully, um, you know, uh, it will be listened, uh, will be heard. Um, and, and hopefully, you know, if this, you know, fast food, you know, uh, restaurants is, you know, um, going to be a problem, why don't we just, you know, put an end to it and then, uh, say no to fast food, you know, in the, you know, township anymore and then look for other businesses because first of all, it's not healthy, you know, if you agree. And the, the, uh, the social health that, you know, you know, problems that they're going to cause is uh, outweighing the benefits that they might, you know, uh, be proposing to you. Uh, thank you for listening and, um, good night.
Thank you.
Jared Seltzer, welcome to the meeting. Please state your name and address for the record.
Jared Seltzer Bagels by Jared four fifty-one Mount Pleasant Avenue. Uh, first off, thank you, and my heart goes out to the members of two hundred Mount Pleasant Avenue. It's sad that the town can spend tens of thousands of dollars coming after my window shades instead of helping you guys. So my heart is with you. But my bigger question is, why does everyone in West Orange know our town attorney's name? Richard Trank. Can you name another town attorney in Livingston, Maplewood, Montclair, Roselands? Seriously, why does everyone know the name Richard Trank? Find it fascinating, cleaning up something too, that Richard Trank and Susan McCartney said in the media was that I was doing unpermitted work. I challenge you to prove that. I was issued my permits in October. Two months later, when I released a video of Janice Gary Adams, who you continue, continue to back yelling at me from her personal vehicle from the town. Then you said my permits were no good and you rescinded them, but you can't rescind permits. I applaud the three town council members who are trying to bring integrity back to this town. I look forward to you ridding us of Richard Trank. Thank you.
Mel Valdez, welcome to the meeting. Please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Seltzer, for your comments. Ms. Valdez, your name and address for the record.
Hi, this is Mel Julie Valdez, um, Elm Street. Um, hi, good evening, Town Council. Um, I would like to know if, um, it can be explained, if I see that there's two bond ordinances on the agenda today. And I would like to know, um, how exactly are streets selected to be repaved? Um, if it is true that PCNG is providing any sort, um, any funds, um, I, I don't see that reflected in the bond order, ordinance, but I do see other grants and other funding that is being provided for that. Um, because, um, I have just seen that over the years, um, there have been streets that have been paved and repaved once again before even my street was repaved. For example, Cherry Street was repaved two times before Elm Street was repaved. And the only reason Elm Street was repaved is because I had to keep on talking to the council members at that time to have it repaved and finally my street was added to it. Um, I noticed that, um, Fairmont Terrace, I believe is the street, the street where ma- mayor, ex-mayor Parisi lives recently was repaved and that street did not need any repaving. That street was smoothed as anything and didn't need to be repaved and that was repaved recently. I would like to know why was that street repaved and not other streets where I'm hearing residents stating that it's been years where they have been advocating for their street to be repaved and it has not. Also, I would like to know, um, how does PCNG come about and, and dig up holes in our streets after it's been repaved and then just patches it up and does a horrible job at patching it up? Because it's a waste of money to repave a street for PCNG to just come and break it up again and just put soft asphalt, um, which doesn't, doesn't help. Now, now our streets then end up looking ugly again and it's a pain when you're driving your car and the asphalt is sticking to the bottom of your car. Um, also, I would like to know when the lines will be repainted around Elm Street, Chestnut, Franklin, Washington School? Because it has been years of me asking and emailing the previous mayor about this and he just responded in a nasty manner instead of actually addressing the issue and doing something about it and putting it in the budget or putting it in this year's budget or something. I don't think paint costs that much to, to repaint the lines on these streets because to be honest, we have a lot of children that walk to Washington School. It's a walking school and it is frankly very dangerous to walk around this area of West Orange. And there has been no focus being put on this area of West Orange. If you look at it, it looks like an area in need of repair, redevelopment, rehabilit- rehabilit- rehabilitation or something. And I don't know if this is being done on purpose. I don't know if this is some type of personal grudge. But I, I also spoke to somebody who lives locally and they said that they also asked about the, the lines being repainted and they were ignored as well. So I just want to know what's going on with that. There, there really is no money in the budget to do this. Quite frankly, based on all the taxes we're paying, I don't see how paint costs that much money. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Nick Collier, welcome to the meeting. Please state your name and address for the record.
Mr. Fagan, how, one moment, please. Mr. Fagan, how many additional comments?
Uh, currently, uh, council president, uh, Mr. Collier is the last one. And we have an individual, uh, who has raised their hand, who has already had an opportunity to speak. So could you please clarify the, uh, policy for?
Certainly. So just for the record, please note that you have one opportunity for a public comment um, during the open public comment session. And I'm sorry, his name was?
Uh, Nick Collier.
And Mr. Collier will be our last, uh, speaker for a public comment this evening.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Nick Collier, Stanley Road, West Orange.
Stanley Road.
Am I speaking at the right level? Can everybody hear?
Nick Collier from Stanley. Thank you.
Okay. This is primarily about the, uh, proposed additions to, uh, West Orange Plaza. With the fast food especially, um, even though the applicants deny their fast food, but anything with a, uh, drive-through to me is a fast food. Um, plus the sighting, the proposed sighting of these big garbage cans right on the edge of Prospect. Uh, previous speaker has already mentioned about the traffic around the area. That's obviously a, a big problem, but I was talking more, more about the, just the general feel of West Orange. As a relative new visitor from, uh, two thousand seventeen, it, without being offensive, West Orange seems to be a little bit rundown. There's not quite, there's sort of different stores and interesting places to attract visitors. And again, I know another speaker said about you, you're trying to attract visitors. But we don't want somebody just to drive off two eighty, grab their Popeyes and shoot off again after tackling the traffic. But I was also thinking, you've got Essex, um, and Essex, um, Eagle Rock Preservation, which frankly is a jewel in the West Orange crown. And from the, from there, we're going to look across to the plaza. I'll re-mention there, you'll be those big horrible garbage trucks, uh, garbage cans. So it's generally, a general feel of the West Orange that we're not really inviting, I think, the, the right kind of businesses to, to kind of up West Orange's game. And that's, that's all I wanted to say. That's, I bide my time.
Thank you, Mr. Collier. Again, public comment is closed. Thank you for everyone who has joined us this evening. Um, we, as a reminder, opened our, uh, meeting this evening at five PM, went into executive session. I came out and now we're continuing, uh, with our regular agenda. I want to respond just with some prepared remarks that I had put together um, in reference to the invocation. And as a response, uh, it was noted that, you know, I did not respond to questions and inquiries last meeting. Um, so I wanted to take an opportunity to do so this evening. And again, of course, this is public comment and we did have residents who, um, do object to the invocation. Um, I maintain who I am at all times. I want to thank Rabbi Mindy for his invocation this evening. Um, it was always my intent to utilize the resources from our clergy alliance to accommodate this request uh, when I implemented the invocation. Many of my colleagues stated that my implementation of an invocation was well-intended, but a misinformed action. Prayer before a council meeting is not a violation of the US Constitution. The US Supreme Court dealt with this issue in the town of Greece, New York versus Galloway in two thousand fourteen. The court ruled that starting local government meetings with a prayer does not violate the Establishment Clause of the US Constitution. Here in West Orange, the three meetings where an invocation preceded the business agenda, the meeting discourse was much more civil and respectful and ended at a more timely hour. My desire is to set the tone of our meetings, acknowledging that we serve as elected officials on mission to create a better West Orange. We may not agree on the path to accomplish that goal, but we should agree that whether to have an invocation or a recitation of the Pledge of Allegiance at the start of a local government meeting is a matter of discretion and not a violation of law. And while I do understand that some of us may be offended, um, there's others that may be offended when we ask to do the Pledge of Allegiance. Um, but it is what we do. And, uh, as your council president, um, I think it is done something to change the tone and tenor of the meetings. I may be wrong. It may be something that, uh, just organically happened independently on its own. Um, however, it is my belief that, um, it is appropriate, um, that it is not a violation of the Constitution and that it does temper our tone and set the stage for the business that we have to enact. Regarding the remainder of the comments, um, I'll speak certainly about, um, some of the construction that we've heard, um, commentary for. So the fast food restaurants is before the zoning board. Um, that is a quasi judicial board. And for those who may not understand the process and the procedure, certainly you can share with your elected officials, um, your support or lack thereof for the two fast food restaurants. But I do encourage each resident to go before the zoning board at their next scheduled meeting and express your objections. There is, uh, protocol and procedure. Um, certainly you have to speak to the speakers that are being presented and question them, but there is an opportunity um, at the zoning, uh, board meetings for you to just simply, um, identify your concerns um, and your like or dislike of the proposed applications. In reference to the Target Plaza, um, I have not expressed support or lack thereof for drive-through restaurants. Um, so to assume that you know what my decision will and wouldn't be, um, is just simply inaccurate. I don't know that anyone has had a personal conversation with me, not a resident, um, to identify what my concerns are. I think at the last workshop, I indicated publicly that West Orange has five of the top ten, uh, QSRs, quick service restaurants. And many of those do not have a drive-through restaurant. Um, there is, that is proof positive that a drive-through is not necessary um, for us to maintain, uh, healthy eating establishment. Um, the, the lack thereof, the clarity in whether it is considered fast food, um, or casual dining, those are restaurant terms. Um, and you know, if you do a little bit of investigation, there are definitions that identify the difference between a fast food restaurant and a quick service restaurant. Again, we sit behind this dais and that is not for us to adjudicate. And it goes properly before the two boards, planning and or zoning and land use laws will be implemented when the decision is made. Um, or unfortunately, if the applicant feels that land use laws were not respected and adhered to, uh, we usually end up in a legal, uh, challenge after the application has been decided upon. Uh, Ms. Lefkowitz, I want to take an opportunity to thank you for, um, your diligence with the ATV ordinance. Um, that is something that, um, again, as I indicated at the last meeting, that is a concern. I brought it to our chief's concern and he did indicate, um, where the, uh, state of New Jersey stands, um, with pursuing, um, the ATVs and the motorcycle, um, riders. It is certainly something that I am very concerned about, the safety, um, of, of not only the, the riders themselves, um, but just the menace that it does cause in our neighborhoods. Um, so thank you for your diligence and I will take an opportunity to review that and certainly poll my colleagues to see if there's any action that can be taken. So I do want to just say thank you. Um, for those who lived at two hundred Mount Pleasant, um, I want to take an opportunity, or while she is no longer present, uh, Ms. Marine Robinson, who indicated that she is eighty-two years old. Um, I disagree with her. She is eighty-two years young, um, vibrant and healthy. Thank you, uh, in particular for coming out and I hope that your days, um, that are, are in front of you are still as, um, pleasant as, as the ones that have been behind you. And thank you for your fifty years that you contributed in education. Um, certainly as a member, former member of the rent leveling board and as a real estate, uh, professional, um, we will have Mr. Smiraldo, who does work with, um, our affordable housing, um, to maybe support and look at, uh, the concerns that you all have expressed. Certainly, we cannot, um, make an opinion. We have not seen your leases. Uh, we don't, we have not reviewed them. So for us to sit here and make a judgment on what is and is not appropriate, um, I think would just be us speaking out of turn. Um, but certainly there are resources here. And while the rent leveling board is no longer an active board, um, certainly I will, um, volunteer my services if, if necessary just as a real estate professional to help you review. And I'm certain, uh, Mr. Smiraldo will do likewise as well. Um, as, as that is his role as well in the municipality. Um, repaving of the streets, um, I had certainly asked that the capital budget be presented and ready for us to, um, consider this evening. Um, it is my understanding that it will be on the next, uh, meeting agenda, which is September the nineteenth. Um, certainly, we will have the administration speak to the, uh, how streets are selected and the prioritizing of what streets. Um, what I will remind, uh, one of our speakers is that in two thousand twenty, um, we were in COVID. And so probably that was the rationale and explanation for everything to be halted. And then, of course, in two thousand twenty-one, um, there was still limited work. Town hall was still closed. Uh, we were still doing the, the, the basics just to function as a community. I'm not suggesting that's an excuse, um, just reminding us the times that we were in when these commitments were not followed through. Um, we will be going over with the capital budget. And we have asked Mr. Gross and the administration to provide to us, um, where we are with the street repaving, what streets, uh, should be next on the list and what streets, um, can we anticipate with this new capital budget that we will be, um, reviewing soon? We totally understand. Um, Ms. Valdez, I heard you say something about street repaving, uh, specific streets. Again, we will allow the administration, um, to respond to that. PSENG with patchwork. Um, certainly we've complained about the patchwork that PSENG has done on many streets, um, certainly off of Pleasant Valley Way. Um, we've heard comments in the last three months of how severe and, and uneven, um, several roads are. So we are looking to, um, in this climate of a five point two percent municipal tax increase, looking at the capital budget, understanding what has not been done to this date, prioritizing what does need to be done. And I can assure you that with our engineering department, they have been going out to try and assess what roads are most critical and should be either moved up or perhaps moved down on the list based on the severity and the condition of those roads. I have some, it's, it's just allergies. I'm sorry. One of the other things we talked about at the Target Plaza or Kmart Plaza, West Orange Plaza, was the placement of the garbage cans. And I took a personal opportunity as a member of the planning board to actually look at the site, walk through the site. There were some concerns that had been brought up with the applicant. Most of them, they have been more than willing to accommodate. But I just wanted to say that as far as the garbage cans, the garbage cans are facing the street now that are behind the Verizon store. So that's not a new site selection. This is just continuing the practice that has always existed at that site location. Again, certainly in agreement with our neighbors' concerns, that two fast food restaurants on Eagle Rock is not conducive to that location, which is evidenced by the number of variances that they are applying for. Certainly, that is, again, the jurisdiction of the zoning board and they will govern themselves accordingly. For the reevaluation, I just wanted to make some suggestions. Don't know if this can be done, but certainly appreciate the tax department coming in and giving us an overview of the process. Wanted to ask the administration, is it possible when we do identify and know who the evaluators are, if it's perhaps possible for us to designate that on the municipal website? Whether they, we can get their names on the site or maybe even the copy of their photo IDs? Just, just understanding and the, and you don't have to respond right now. You can actually respond at a, at a later, but just putting some ideas out there. They came to my mind. In addition to that, a do's and don'ts statement that we can post on the website. Do ask the evaluators what questions to ask them, what questions they can answer and can't answer. I think that would be helpful as they go out into the community. And certainly, I am very concerned. Not only do we have in West Orange, the, the car thefts, and we know that is a statewide, nationwide issue, but we also have the increased incidence of people coming into homes at night, which is going to be a heightened level. We have a tremendous amount of seniors. If we can just do something to relax and ease, I mean, I don't know what it could be, but I think we need to think outside the box and make sure we communicate with our senior population. It is very easy to duplicate anything. We know that right now. And I just want to make sure that as we're going out with this evaluation process, that we don't have any bad actors that will try and imitate and, and then, you know, do anything inappropriate. So I, I am very sensitive to that concern. Our, our, many of our seniors live alone at home and we know that these are going to be strangers coming into their houses. So I do not want to allow that to go without some type of concern verbalized and vocalized on my part. I just wanted to speak to some of the frustrations with, with our residents, whether it be Mr. Trink, whether it be Janice Gary Adams, whether it be the mayor, whether it be Tammy Williams. You know, again, myself personally, I'm an elected official. You can voice your satisfaction, displeasure or pleasure with me at the next voting option and ballot option. We do run for reelection. But I do want to just remind our residents that you don't have to like us, but you don't have to denigrate us. You don't have to be so critical. We're all human beings. We're here to serve. We're doing what is, in our opinions at the time, was best for West Orange. You know, I often say that with this job, there was so much that I did not know and understand. And I'm still learning every day that I sit in this seat. We're not human, we're not perfect human beings. We do make mistakes and we are trying to do the best we can. We serve so that we can make West Orange the best that she can be. And while, you know, we do have laws that govern how we act and how we do things, we're also here as a legislative body because sometimes those laws need to be changed. There is a way to do that. Certainly, we're open to changing whatever laws do need to be updated in our code book. Times change, things change. I often see resolutions, ordinances that I look at when I read them and I want language change. Sometimes that can be done, sometimes it can't because these are state statutes. But, but I just would like to ask for a little more grace, whether you're going through a legal battle with the township or just frustrated that you can't get done what you want to get done. And just remember, we have families, we're human beings and we're, we're here to do and serve the people and we're doing the best that we can. Thank you. And I will defer to Councilwoman Spock for her public comments as well.
Thank you. I want to start just by talking to everyone who has expressed concern about the Target, the drive-throughs, the fast food on Eagle Rock. I haven't heard one resident say, I think we should have fast food at Target. And I haven't had one resident say, I think it's a great idea to have some fast food restaurants on Eagle Rock. What I've had heard many residents say now, over many council meetings and to me in email and publicly, is that they don't want West Orange to turn into an array of fast food restaurants. That they want us to maintain the aesthetic beauty of our township. That they want us to control the traffic that we see getting out of hand. And I have to say that they want us to control their home values. Many are concerned that their home values are going to decrease if West Orange starts to look like a drive-in. And I have to agree with them. And it just makes the point that we make, I've been trying to make for a decade. I heard Councilman Rutherford talk about last week and at many meetings, is our need for a planner? I think if all of our residents would understand and maybe lobby our administration, our mayor and all of us, for a town planner who would help us develop our township in a way that benefits all of us and that all of us want to see. Because we need someone who will take a serious look at our master plan and will construct it in a way that represents who we are and what we want to be. So I think that's at the crux of the issue. It has been for a decade, ever since I started paying attention. And I think we need to all start talking about that and lobbying for that more clearly. So I know that's a lot of people that, that had that concern. I want to thank Rabbi Mindy for his beautiful, concise and very appropriate invocation. I listened very carefully to what he had said and it was just so appropriate for the moment. And I think the brevity also was very, made his statements very clear. And also Bishop Adams, I know how passionate he is about our township. I know how involved he is, especially with our gifted children, and I appreciate all that. But I have to say, I agree with Claudia Sanders, that we have so many people here in our township who really don't feel that the invocation is appropriate. And it does offend some people. It's hard to be inclusive of everybody. And I, I really don't see any difference in the tone and tenor of our council since we've started this, you know, a few council meetings ago. I think what's important is that we all respect one another, put ourselves in each other's shoes and listen to those who have ideas and suggestions that are different from their own. And I think that is what will go a long way in changing the tone of the council and of our residents at large. John Blanton, thank you for calling in and for all your interest in our seniors. I am so excited that you have become a volunteer, a senior volunteer with our organization, with our, our Green West Orange. And thank you for your participation there. You will be such a asset as we try to help Laura Van Dyke implement our Teen Techies program. And thank you, Ms. Morelli, for reminding us that the seniors do have many, many unmet needs in our community and for all of your advocacy and your work on our Older Adults Advisory Board. I think we've got so many passionate seniors who really want to see some changes in the way we have approached our senior activities and want to see us make Toby Katz a center where seniors can go and have lunch with one another. And if we all get to get banned together and unite and volunteer, I think we can help Laura Van Dyke make that happen. We have to remember, she's very short-staffed. It's her and Noelia. They do an incredible job with the resources they have, but I think it's going to take a village. It's going to take all of us working together to make some of these goals that we want to see a reality, including the revisions to our Older Adults Advisory Board, which will make it a more inclusive body where we can actually get greater participation. So thank you. Phil Littonoff, again, thank you so much for all your follow-up on the library and for your comments to Mr. Gross. Mr. Gross probably has one of the most difficult jobs in this township and he has, wears many hats. I often get frustrated when, if I don't get something that I need right away, but I know that he's always trying to get the job done and has so many difficulties and, and too, has so many initiatives that he has to work on. And we do appreciate everything he does for us. Oh, I did want to speak to those who came for the first time, who are having all of the difficulties on 200 Mount Pleasant Avenue. And I hope that we'll be able to have Mr. Smiraldo talk about that in a little more detail. But I am glad to see them coming out, participating in our government and making their needs known. Because it's only when you come out, like our seniors have now for a decade, and Mrs. Lefkowitz in the most recent time, that you really can make change and you really can help us to help you. And so hopefully, Mr. Smiraldo will be able to do that. Mrs. Lefkowitz, I really appreciate your taking on the ATV. And I have to say, I was going to read it, but in the interest of time, I'm going to read it carefully myself. I'm going to reach out to each and every one of my council members, to the chief, who probably has some more ideas on how we can do this, especially since it's come from another municipality. Perhaps we can work with other municipalities to kind of get something like this on the radar. And of course, Mr. Trank can give us some guidance in how something like this could be constructed. I think it's a great idea and I really would like to see it happen. I think it's long overdue and Pleasant Valley Way does need some attention, not only with the roads, but with Roz Moskowitz and I have talked with the Economic Development Commission about beautifying it a little bit. We'd love to see street lamps and some plants and things that slow down traffic in other townships here. But that's a work in progress. Robert Snifter, thank you for coming out. I'm so glad to see your community participating and making your needs known. I think there are two bond ordinances on tonight. I am going to ask if they'd be tabled, or if not, I will vote no on them. I haven't gotten all of the information. I need to really assess what, and understand what streets are going to be paved. They're not the same streets that were in our original bond ordinance, 2771. And I think I've had difficulty in the past trying to understand from an engineering point of view what, what streets we're paving and why, what trees we're taking down and, and how that roadwork is constructed. And I think we need to look at our capital budget. We need to put these on hold for a little bit. And I think we need to take a more comprehensive approach to all of the street work that we've been doing here. So to all of you who have come out with concerns about your streets, I think we need to slow down and take a little more comprehensive approach. Oh, to Ms. Viola, who is concerned about cannabis on Washington Street. I want you to know, I did not vote for that. I am a speech-language pathologist at Washington School. Those children are my children. I am extremely concerned about cannabis in their neighborhood where they walk to school. I actually worked with our constituents on Pleasant Valley Way when they had concerns that a cannabis retailer was going to be placed right in the center of their town where they walk to synagogue with their children, right by by the school, by Kelly School and by West Orange High School, across the street from Dunkin' Donuts, where our children go and vape at lunchtime. We have some drug problems in our schools and in our town, and I think we need to address them. And there, I, I made sure in the legislation we had that they are 500 feet. The retailers are 500 feet from schools. That's the best I could do. I wanted it 1,000 feet. I see no reason why they can't be 1,000 feet. They may have to pay a little bit more rent for the establishments that they can find 1,000 feet from a school. But I believe we have to put our children first and I believe the adults in the room have to stand up. So thank you so much to you and your entire community for coming out and advocating for our children. And I think that's about it.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Gabby Michael?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you all, to those of you here in council chambers with us tonight, also on Zoom. As I say in every meeting, it's important to have residents engaged and active in what's happening in town and to speak up and hold us all accountable, not just for elected officials, those who work in government, everyone. So that being said, I first off would hope that everyone had a great Labor Day weekend. I wish all the students tomorrow a wonderful school year. And I also want to wish a Happy New Year to all of our residents who practice Jewish faith, but also Ethiopians and Eritreans, because I'm both Ethiopian and Eritrean, who also celebrate New Year. It's generally on 9/11, but this year, because of the leap year, it's on September 12th. So Malcolm Adis Amet, which means Happy New Year in Amharic, and Rehus Hadish Amet in Tigrinya, Happy New Year to you all. Thank you, Mr. Fagan and Mr. Publisi for the information. Pastor Adams, I just want to let you know that I'm very supportive of clergy and I love the diversity, religions, ethnicities in our town. I understand the intention behind the prayers. And as I mentioned in the previous meeting, I come from a very religious family. My great uncle used to be the king's personal priest and spiritual advisor in Ethiopia. My parents helped open up the first Ethiopian Orthodox Church in New Jersey, right in West Orange, Dundee Street. So I am as, you know, I'm, I'm very religious and I believe, but I don't believe that prayers or invocation are appropriate in council meetings. Don't take it personal. It's not about you. It's, it's, it's really, it's about all the residents and, and we have, we have different residents of different religious backgrounds and some who aren't religious. So I stand by my comments and will continue to do so if we continue to have these invocations at every meeting. It has no business here in our council meeting, with all due respect. And Mr. Trank, I have a question for you. Are we opening ourselves up to litigation by continuing these invocations? As township attorney, don't you think it's inappropriate to have these invocations?
Mr. Trank, you can respond at the end of public comment. Thank you.
So I'm going to go by topic instead of calling out every resident because, for the sake of time. Regarding the residents at 200 Pleasant Valley Way, it's really disheartening to hear what's happening. I echo the council president's sentiments. I really hope that the administration will look into this. Mr. Smiraldo, I don't know what, what can be done. The health department can go out there with all the rodents.
Mr. Smeraldo, I don't know what, what can be done. The Health Department can go out there with all the rap, the rodents and unsanitary conditions. I don't know what can be done from a legal standpoint. Mr. Gross, even regarding the sewer fee, if that's even allowed. So I will defer to the administration with the appropriate divisions. Regarding the resolution for ATV's enforcements, thank you, Ms. Lefkowitz. I will also defer to our chief. But I do believe it is an issue and that if we do not enforce, it will get worse. Because if no one's out there telling them not to do it, they will continue to do it and gather. So I really, I support this resolution. I hope that, you know, I heard my council, council, our council president and other colleagues, hopefully, I believe that unanimously there'll be support for this resolution. Or hope there will be. Regarding street paving, it's really unfortunate that the bond ordinance didn't pass. Previously, I was in support of it. I work in government, so I understand the importance of roads being paved. I really hope that we can get a comprehensive plan going and a list. And I know that we have some capital bond improvements here, and hopefully, Mr. Gross, you can touch on and, and speak more to it. But I'm really hoping that we can have an ordinance of all the capital bond improvements versus like breaking them up like this and having all the street pavements, if that's possible. I, I don't know what the process is like. Where am I? The cannabis store on Washington Street. Ms. Viola, just so you know what the process is. If the store does successfully open up, just like liquor stores, you have to be twenty-one to purchase it, but unlike liquor stores, no one can walk in unless they're twenty-one. So I can bring my ten-year-old child into a liquor store if I want to buy a bottle of wine. He cannot come into a cannabis store. It is heavily monitored. There's security. There's comprehensive plans. I hear you, but it has been made legal in the state of New Jersey. It is recreational. So I believe education's going to be a really big proponent to this and enforcement somehow. And then having, I think, as our chief mentioned, a cannabis consultant to help us as we continue with this process. Because we cannot prevent them from opening. Legally, they are allowed. If they follow all the parameters and guidelines and they're in good standing, we, we can't say no to them opening. And hopefully, Chief Abbott can mention or speak to this. The three ordinances that were discussed in the last meeting that we had, I am in support of the tree ordinance, the, the ban on fast food drive-throughs and the gas blowers. I do have to say that I was a little concerned when I heard Mr. Trank say, "our green whatever." I do believe that was rude and inappropriate, and, and I think that an apology would be acceptable, should be made to our green member, our green West Orange members. And Jared, I'm, I'm Mr. Seltzer. I'm really sorry to hear what's happening. This is just my opinion. I'm not an attorney. But I, I, you know, to me, it does seem retaliatory, because I, I drive around town. I lived in this town most of my life. I see other businesses with shades and curtains, and it doesn't make sense to me why we are where we are. But I will leave it at that, and I hope, you know, I believe in the justice system and hope, you know, justice will prevail. It just doesn't seem right to me, that it seems like selective enforcement. And it's embarrassing what's happening here in town. I go places and people are like, what's happening? What's happening with that bagel store? What's happening, you know, with the administration? And, and it's, I really hope that we can come to a resolution and do the right thing. The bond ordinance, I already said I defer to, defer to Mr. Gross. And again, with fast food drive-throughs, I am opposed to the plan on Eagle Rock Avenue. And I really hope that we can pass the ordinance to ban future fast food drive-throughs. And that's it.
Thank you, Council President. Ms. DeAngelis, thank you for showing up tonight and advocating both for your neighborhood and for those that are listening challenged. Your concerns were heard loud and clear, and we'll see what we can do about improving listening devices in the future. I share the concerns of my council colleagues that have already commented. What's going on at two hundred Mount Pleasant Avenue? First of all, that's news to me. I did not know any of those complaints before tonight. And so I, I hear you loud and clear. I want to encourage all of the residents at two hundred Mount Pleasant Avenue that have those kinds of challenges to send in your complaints to us. That is a part of what we are supposed to do. We're supposed to understand the issues that residents are facing and advocate for a way forward that makes sense for everybody. And so I'm happy to do that myself. You asked the question, what can the council do? We can reinstate the rent leveling board. And when we do it, we can seek to give it additional strength or, or teeth, for lack of a better analogy, so that it is not so that it is not something that can be ignored, that it has the ability to actually enforce the solutions that are settled on, on there. So, Mr. Smeraldo will talk about that, I guess, in, in your comments, but I'm certainly interested in reinstating reviewing the current ordinance and municipal clerk, please send it to me if you don't mind. The last one for the rent leveling board, so that we can look to strengthen it as we reinstate. I want Mr. Gross to speak to the or maybe it's better, better response would come from Mr. Mr. Trank. Multiple commentators complained about the water and sewer fee from two hundred Mount Pleasant Avenue, and none of them spoke about it in the way that the ordinance actually reads, which is it is charged based on bedrooms. It's not charged by the number of people or the, in the property or the square footage, which are two of the comments that were made tonight. So I'd like to know what we can, as an administration, do to address those that seek to profit from this change or improperly place the burden on residents. As always, Mr. Fagan and Mr. Puglisi, thank you for your timely information. Ms. Lefkowitz certainly do understand and agree that the ATVs and motorcycles, I don't know about motorcycles. I mean, I, I feel a little conflicted there. Motorcycles are a legitimate form of transportation if they're properly licensed and registered. I don't see any issue with that as long as they're following the law. The bigger challenge for me is unlicensed or unregistered vehicles that are being driven on city streets that are not intended or authorized to be driven there. And that's the issue with the ATV. So I know we've gotten some state guidance. And, and, you know, I'm, I'm sure Mr. Abbott or Mr. Trank will elaborate on this, but it doesn't seem as if there is much we can do with regard to pursuing them or impeding their pathway. I don't know what else we could do. And if there's something else we can do, and if it requires an ordinance or a resolution of some sort, I'm happy to entertain that. Because I don't want anybody to get hurt, and people will get hurt. Unfortunately, many of them ride without a helmet or proper safety gear. And so they pose a risk to themselves, not just to the folks that are in the community. So I, you know, I'm interested in your response to that at the appropriate time. I addressed the issues from two hundred Mount Pleasant Avenue. I don't think I'm going to go back over every single commenter's or speaker's comments. Mr. Zifner, and I hope I said your name properly. You know, you, 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 you raised some interesting points. One is PSENG provided some funding for your street to be repaved. I'd like Mr. Gross to speak to that. Like one of the other commenters, I did not see that in any of the ordinances that are before us now or in any of the other ones that are prior, but I do know that they do have some financial obligation with regard to, to either repairing or providing financing for the repairing of the streets when they ripped them up. So please address that specifically with regard to Hoover and Garfield, but generally with regard to our relationship with the electricity provider. Thank you, Ms. Morelli, as always, for your advocacy for seniors. I'm glad you enjoyed the Rat Pack. And I'm glad my council colleagues were able to get transportation for our seniors. Ms. Kuzan, I want to thank you for your comments as well. I think Councilwoman Gabbra Michael did a good job of addressing the legal aspects of that. What I will say is, in addition to that, these licensees are very well aware that they will lose their license if they serve a minor. And there's, at least as far as I can tell with conversations I've had with my four council colleagues, there is no grace that should be expected from this council with regard to serving minors. The law is very clear. You cannot even enter the store unless you are old enough to purchase. So if someone engages in straw purchases, we have a mechanism to address that. If someone, if a licensee allow, and straw purchases when an adult buys it for a kid, if, if a licensee allows people under the age, under the legal age to purchase into their store, they can lose their license. This is a new space for us. It is certainly going to be fraught with real-time learning or teachable moments or learning moments. So I'm sure we're going to make some mistakes along the way. But my expectation is that the professionals that are charged with monitoring and policing the business will do an outstanding job. I'm in support of our chief's recommendation that we have a consultant that is an expert in that field to help guide the police department and the other departments in town with regard to enforcement, but also the council with regard to the law and the licensees with regard to their responsibilities. So, but I do hear you. And I want you to know, I, I, a council person from Orange reached out to me on this same issue because it affects folks on the orange side of the border. So we are discussing, having some open conversation with residents in the area to better understand those concerns and hear some potential solutions from the residents that are most directly affected, and I'm going to ask you to stay tuned for that. Mr. Jacobson, I hear you loud and clear, and actually, I, I, I am concerned about affordable housing in West Orange. So your points certainly stuck out with regard to the affordable nature of those apartments. I don't know legally, and I would ask Mr. Trank or Mr. Smeraldo to weigh in. I don't know legally what can be done with regard to mandating fees for pools or gyms. To me, it does, and I'm a layman, so I have no expertise in this area. But to me, it does seem like a way to raise the rent without technically violating the rules around raising the rent. I could totally be wrong, and I look forward to your guidance on that. But if it is, we need to know what can be done, and those residents need to know what will be done to address that if it is outside of the law, if those, if those increases are outside of the law. Florence Smith talked about the trash cans. I'm going to defer to our Health Department with regard to those trash cans, and we'll certainly forward an email to the director tomorrow to see what, if anything, can be done to im- improve pest control, even if it is by relocating the trash cans or if there's some other mechanism that can be employed. I am going to mess this name up, so I do apologize. Sharon Yedwaf, Sharon Yedwaf, thank you for calling in. Thank you, Councilwoman, for helping me. We'll have to discuss these streets being repaved. It's already been requested. I won't reiterate it. With the exception of, I, I, I do think it's important to know the answer to this question. Are any streets that have been paved in the last seven years on the list to be repaved now? Meaning from the, the bond ordinance that we voted down earlier this year or either of the two that are on for tonight. Are any of those, have any of those streets been repaved in the last seven years? Over the course of this year, we've heard multiple comments from the public regarding their streets not being paved. And seven years, I think, is less than the amount of time that many of those folks have already complained about. Some of them have been ten or more years and have gone without being repaved. So I'd like to know if any of the streets that are currently planned to be paved have been paved within the last seven years, and that's based on the ordinance that was voted down earlier this year, the two that are on tonight, and obviously, any that may be included in the capital budget. All right, Pastor Adams, I want to take a moment to address this. So I understand your sentiments. I want to first say nothing that I said last week was directed toward you or any individual. I do want to echo the comments of one public member who's, who rightfully quoted me as saying, I did say it was constitutional. It is constitutional. There's no question about it. It is done on a regular basis in both the House and the Senate. My issue is not constitutionality. And it's not even really about appropriateness. It's certainly not about being a believer, because I am a firm believer, and I understand and know fully and believe in fully the power of prayer. My issue is that we have right now in West Orange so many different divisions, so many different things that are being fought over. And they are being fought over vehemently, to the point where people are getting worked up to make threats against other people, some of whom are in this room right now. And this is something that we just don't have to fight over. And for me in particular, I am a pastor, and I said this last time, I try to keep those roles separate, and I think I've done a very good job of keeping those roles separate. But I pray before every meeting. And I know what an invocation is. An invocation is invoking the presence of God in that space. I also understand the power of God. God is omnipresent everywhere, all the time. So an invocation is not even necessary if God is everywhere, all the time. God is here whether we ask God to be here or not. Now, I still pray before every meeting. And I do that because it's a part of my faith tradition. I do it because it helps me center myself. It helps me deal with some difficult people, some of whom are going to say some nasty things or do some nasty things. It helps me. So I pray, and I encourage everybody to pray, whatever your faith is. But there's no, to, at this time, there's no need to add another thing to the long list of things we're already fighting over. Let's get some of those things off the list. Let's get some resolution. Let's have a better way of interacting with each other before we add more things to the list. And to the council president's point, she said, you know, the, the meetings were more respectful and civil, and they ended earlier after we instituted the invocation. Well, the meetings are more respectful, at least between you and I, because we met. We sat down and had a meeting outside of the public view, just the two of us, with two other non-elected officials, and made some agreements. And those agreements, I believe, far outweighed the impact of the invocation. I believe what it is you and I agreed to personally and privately has affected the interaction on this day is far more than having the invocation. So rather than fight with anyone over it, and since we all have the same access to the Creator, none of us has to go through someone else to get there. I think it is important that we pray. Pray yourself. I'll pray myself. We can all pray. There's power in prayer. But I think if we're going to do it and cause other folks to be upset or offended or make it another issue that we have to fight over, I don't think it's worth the fight. There is a wrong way to do the right thing. There is a wrong time to do, to do the right thing. And I know some very famous people have said that that is not true. Some very powerful and impactful people have said that that's not true. I absolutely disagree, because if you do the right thing at the wrong time, it may not be effective. It may not work at all. It may be rejected, even if it is the right thing. If you do the right thing in the wrong way, it may not be effective or received well and may not have the impact that you want. So timing absolutely matters to me. And I think right now with all of these other fights, we don't need to add anything to that list. I hope that that answers your, or that effectively addresses your concerns, Pastor Adams. And I say that with all due respect, and I think you already know that, but I say that better for the, the public than for you, because I know you already know. Ms. Stedwell, thank you for continuing, continuing to advocate for your community. Ms. Stedwell, thank you for continuing, continuing to advocate for your community. It's already been requested that the roads be discussed. Mr. Rodriguez, you are not the only one to have voiced a concern about how racism may appear in the appraisal process. It has been well documented within the last couple of years by major news organizations that appraisers systematically, regularly, commonly undervalue homes that are owned by African-Americans when it's time to sell them. And the concern is that they'll do the same thing. They'll overvalue them in terms of what they'll have to pay for the taxes, which would lower the value in the market. People make decisions about what they're going to buy, what house they're going to buy, based on the price of the house and the taxes, the interest rate that they'll have to pay on the mortgage if they take one. So we do need to address those concerns. I don't know exactly how to do it. And on that point, you know, and I'm happy to have a conversation about it, but, and I'm open to any suggestions. But, but on that point about the appraisers, I don't think we should list their IDs anywhere publicly. For the same reason that council president stated earlier, it's very easy to duplicate almost anything. So let's find a way to help residents be informed about the process and what to expect and how to protect themselves without, you know, making matters worse. That's the law of unintended consequences. And, you know, we've seen that in numerous issues tonight. Mr. Blanton, thank you as always for your advocacy and your involvement. The one thing that was not, you, your, your concerns about the cleanup at DPW were not addressed, but they were discussed at the last council meeting. I'm going to ask Mr. Gross to, to, Mr. Gross to address it again, as well as with regard to Mr. Lepore's status. Mr. Litvinoff, I thank you for always being involved, and I think your issues with regard to our green West Orange have been well received. And I've addressed Mrs. Malanga's questions. With regard to the fast food restaurants not being permitted at West Orange Plaza, please, Mr. Gross, address that if that is the case. I've heard that now from a couple of people. And I don't think it's fast food restaurants. I think it's drive-throughs, but I could be conflating the two. So please let us know what is and is not in the current code permissible for restaurants in that space. I think I've addressed all of those. For those that are concerned about the Sonic and the Popeyes, please show up at our planning board and our zoning board meetings where they are discussed. I share your concerns, and I think the entire council does, with regard to traffic and garbage in that area. And I, I think you'll find a sympathetic counsel on that issue. I think I answered everything. Thank you, Council President. That ends it for me. If I missed your comment, I do apologize.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Council President. Okay, so I'm going to start off with the residents that came in from 200 Mount Pleasant Avenue. Thank you so much for bringing this to our attention. I'm glad that I saw Mr. Smiraldo go out immediately when they started to depart the room to have a conversation with them. So I look forward to hearing the administration's response of what they, what they can and cannot do for them. I do want to add to that conversation. You know, the Health Department, as my colleague says, needs to pay a visit with the trash cans. But also, I, I remember, I believe it was Linda Stiles had reached out to us a year or two back in regards to these containers, where they were located. I know Mr. Kizer was, had looked into it. So I'm just wondering, you know, there's probably some follow-up there for the administration, Mr. Gross. I'm not sure if you recall this. But it's disappointing that this hasn't been resolved yet, because this is, is an ongoing issue that we should have been involved with in regards to the containers with the Health Department. But, you know, very disappointing to hear that they're going to add on for a pool and for a gym membership. Just ridiculous. So hopefully, Mr. Smiraldo could shed some light. But thank you, thank you so much for coming down and bringing this to our attention. And hopefully, there'll be good, some good resolve from it. The ATV drivers, you know, this has been an ongoing thing for a year now. I, I would support a resolution. I do want the chief to look at this. I don't understand why the governor's is not doing more for, you know, for residents in the state of New Jersey. This is ridiculous. My son was passing through Verona. They were zipping down Bloomfield Avenue. And the first thing I thought of in the beginning of the evening when Mr. Fagan put out the notice, "Drive safely. Schools start session tomorrow." And Shilla, it's funny that you brought this to us, because that was the first thing I thought of, of these crazy drivers. And, and God forbid, with the late bus, because I know sometimes a late bus is going to start getting dark at night. You know, they've been seen at 6:30 on a weekday night. So, you know, parents are going to sporting events. Chief, you know, we, you know, I'm looking to, to hear more from you, because, you know, I, I don't think they're going to be stopping for, for gas. They seem to be ripping right through. But yeah, whatever we can do, we, we need to really get the attention of the state, because we need help. And they, they, I don't understand why they're not, why they're not being responsive to this. It's really disappointing that so many of us have to live and tolerate this this craziness. Let's see, where do I want to start? Let me start with the bond ordinances, or continue with the bond ordinances. So we have two on this evening. That's not the end of the story. This, you know, story continues next week with the capital budget, which we thought would, would occur this evening. So what I want, administration, if they can speak to this evening, the streets mentioned this evening, are they going to be included in next week's ordinances? I mean, budget, rather, capital budget, and if they would be covered. We, you know, Lenny Lepore was here for many years. He was such a great resource for us, a great administrator. Really had things on schedule for our streets, which we, we continue. COVID definitely slowed down that schedule, as council president spoke to earlier. A not excuse, you know, fact. Especially because with the funding at the time, we didn't have funding, so all spending was on hold for about, what, six months, I, I believe. And then afterwards, just trying to get everything restarted, definitely caused a delay. With that being said, there is a schedule. I know, Ms. Valdez, I know you, you sounded very frustrated. And I, I know communication always, you know, wasn't, you know, there, there sometimes, but again, you know, there isn't any, you know, everything's on a schedule. And if it gets off schedule, there's a reason, whether it's the water company, whether it's the public service company, whether it's a county coming through with the roadway. There's so many different, different reasons for that. And, you know, having, not having Mr. Lepore here, with him retiring, has, and he has been playing a small role, which administration can speak to, his replacement. There's been some staffing concerns. This, I don't want to say too much because of HR, so I'll let Mr. Gross speak to that. But there has been challenges the past few months in engineering, and they're trying to get through that. And hopefully, we'll be able to approve our capital budget and satisfy a lot of these complaints that we heard this evening. Also, you know, a year or so ago, and various reasons, you know, not all the funding was approved. I've always supported the funding, because just being elder statesman here, just knowing what happens when you get off schedule. And sometimes that causes fees down the road. Look at all the, look at all the cost and, and fees with building. You know, we see that with change orders with our, our library project that started and got priced out four years ago. You know, just seeing the grocery store, how prices have quadrupled in the past two years. So inflation has taken its toll, and we really need to be mindful when we're looking at these projects next week. And some of these projects tonight are tied to grants, so I look forward to that conversation. So just trying to help give the public some more information of why things happen. It's not always a perfect system, but there is, you know, there is a system in place and different variables for interrupting that process and that system. Mr. Blanton, good to hear from you this evening. Caught up with you last week. Always thank you for your comments. You'd be happy to know. You mentioned our senior programming and mentioning ARP, your, I couldn't, the air conditioner was kicking in, so I didn't hear all your comments, but I'm not sure if I told you when I talked to you last week. But, you know, very excited that we were the 13th township in the state of New Jersey to be AARP certified. That happened a couple of years ago with the hard work when I first came on the council of our, our senior services department at the time. God rest her soul, Patty Duffy was involved in that. Our director, Teresa Nova, so a lot of hard work. Laura Van Dyke, always implementing and, and working hard. Our senior survey started it all, and thank you, Ms. Morelli. Very involved there a few years ago, but that AARP certification is going to help us with, with more grants. And we need to bring more grants in so we can do more. We gotta, you know, we've been doing more with less, but we need to, to keep going. So I hope the senior advisory board is instrumental in working on also raising funding and being involved with, with raising funds and some fundraisers. Because anywhere we could supplement, especially bringing back that our seniors able to go to Toby Katz Center, just as Toby Katz had wanted it. I always said, let me know when you're ready to open up. I'm going to buy the Keurig for you. So it's just such a great, great space, and we, we need to utilize that. But we also need the personnel there as well, but I'm sure we could figure that out. Let's see, these are road repairs, the cannabis location on Washington Street. I did not support that location, and no offense to the investor. I know they're trying to put out education for, for students and trying to do the right things, and, and that's all great. Reading comments this weekend, I don't, I, I scroll through Facebook to just see what comments are out there. And was very disappointed to see this weekend that a 15-year-old was trying to push cannabis on some younger kids in a neighborhood. And, and just reading through the comments, the, the 15-year-old threw out the cannabis onto the ground and told the kids to pick it up. It's legal now. So that parent, any parent, you, you, you call chief. You, you, you call. You call your schools. You call someone. That should not be happening. It should not be tolerating, and this is part of the education. Obviously, that 15-year-old was coached, was coached to say, throw it out there and let the kid pick it up, so they wouldn't be involved, and they could argue that out. And shouldn't be tolerating it. That being said, it's here. This, this, you know, the state of past. I did not vote for it for various reasons, not because I didn't want to decriminalize and, and not hurt folks involved or not let folks have their own choices with their recreational activities. But because I knew it would cause a circus that sometimes is caused with it, and it, we're, we're going to have growing pains as a community trying to get through this, and we'll be having that conversations in the near future. We, we got to talk about how we're going to regulate it. And again, it's, it's growing pains. But, and we'll have to work together to get through it. In regards to the, what else did I miss? In regards to the other ordinances, so Thursday's workshop, I thought was really good. I know we all didn't come to agreement on everything, but, you know, what, what's, what's new? But I do appreciate all the, all the opinions. I like to take my time with these ordinances, mainly because, not because I just, I'm a rubber stamp and I just want to push things through, because I want to look at all, all situations. I'll give you an example, the drive, the drive-throughs. You know, we should have on there that they should not be allowed for the cannabis retail. That, that wasn't in this ordinance. That's something I thought of after we left the meeting on Thursday. Also, I, if you missed it, I've been very vocal where I do not support on Eagle Rock Avenue. I have no interest in Eagle Rock Avenue becoming Route 10. And I'm very vocal about that, but I'm also going to let the process play out and it go to the zoning board. And hopefully, they don't want Eagle Rock Avenue to become Route 10. And that's, that's a system we have set, set into place. The only reason I was entertaining it, not because I owe Target or I'm afraid of Target, I, I appreciate the, the one comment that was made. You know, for what I do for a living, and, and I, I try to be intelligent about my opinions. But, you know, I, I want to see, I know marketing, and so I don't know if that will help the other restaurateurs in there, such as Frank's Pizza, who's been trying to survive for 30 years now. And congratulations to Rocco and his family for being in business in the township for 30 years. Would that help drive more folks to his pizza area? And these are the kind of things I'm trying to figure out. So with that, also, I've been told, or we have two application, I've been told. No, we have two applications already in the mix. So by rushing these ordinances, isn't going to change those application regardless if we pass this. So why not do the homework, do the work, and make sure we get the ordinance to perfection? But I'm one of, one of five votes, so I just want to share with the public my thought processes on these. I support a strong tree ordinance, but I also support balance in the community. I want, you know, they don't always come on the call, but there's folks that panic that they want to put a pool, they want to put an addition, and they worry about the tree ordinance. So we want to make sure we have the right balance for everyone. We want to preserve or actually increase our canopy and make sure we get this right. So I, I'm not going to apologize for taking my time and trying to be thoughtful in protecting our, all our residents in, in the township. And I do appreciate all that our concern and all the advocates for coming on the call. And I appreciate you taking your time to educate, educate us, especially myself. And hopefully, we'll get this right for you, because you deserve it. The revale, I want to express as well to the administration, I am concerned with folks knocking on the door. I know they'll have badges, but there has been a lot of people, I'll call Madam Clerk, you know, multiple times through the year to make sure certain folks have permits out there, and then she'll call the companies and let them know. But I, I would recommend for, for those who don't want to open your door, and I'm not sure how, what the process, how feasible the process will be, but, you know, if, can they, can they request? Excuse me, Mr. Gross. Can they request, are they going to be able to request appointments? So they don't have to answer the door and feel uncomfortable. I know that it was said there, but I would maybe, Noelio, maybe we could work with Ms. Van Dyke. I would maybe, uh Noelio, maybe we could work with Ms. Van Dyke um with senior sir. But they're usually by appointment, so, because what I heard earlier that it sounded more like they're gonna show up. If you don't let them in, then you gotta call them, then they come back. I just don't want folks, I just want folks to realize that. And maybe this is, we have senior newsletter, we have various newsletters that we need and Mr. Fagan, um being our public information officer to notify the public that they are, they can make the appointment.
I I I can find out for you for sure, but my, at the very least, um, there there would be some communication upfront saying we're going to be, they were gonna be there at a certain point in time. And then if you wanted to re- that wasn't a good time, you can reschedule it. So, so there's, there's no question that 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 can be accommodated. And also getting back to um the request earlier, um to the extent that they are able to cooperate with us to get us um photos uh so that people can confirm, go to the website and confirm who these people are.
Thank you.
Um, I I will, we certainly would support that. I just, that that we would just need their cooperation. And I don't know what issues they may, may or may not have with that as well.
So whatever, whatever we need to do, I think is is gonna have to be the situation. But also for those who missed the uh presentation earlier in conference agenda to make sure that you go online um to review it. Um, it's in the beginning of the meeting at the very um.
We'll have the presentation put on the website as well.
Okay, great. This way they could get uh familiar and comfortable with it. And I think I covered everything. Capital budget, we're gonna do, the paving. And oh, you know, in regards to the invocation. You know, past Bishop Adams, you know, thank you for your service and all your volunteerism um to our community. You are one of the most honorable men, I I I know, and I feel sorry that you felt bad about the comments that that you heard. Uh, with that being said, um, you know, I always leave the, the meeting to the council president of what they they feel is best. I think the council president's intent has been a very positive. Little disappointing that, you know, we have to, you know, disagree on prayer. Um, I'm a very religious person. Um, I you know, it it, I'm fine with with it in the, maybe we need, if council president want to continue, maybe we need to maybe craft it so it's generic each each meeting. Um, I don't want to limit our um our speakers and I appreciate them coming. I find it comforting. And it's disappointing, not everybody shares my 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 views on that. Um, so uh again, we'll, I'll look forward to, you know, hear from folks and um. I I I I, I don't know.
What do you say?
Uh, no, I'm I'm, I'm saying that I'm it, I find it comforting for myself. I'm disappointed that many others don't find it as comforting, so um. Um, and that is disappointing. But again, I find no fault in that and it shouldn't be something that should divide us. It should be something that should inspire us. And I find inspiration. I also know this hasn't been an issue at any other community event when we, this is done. So it is kind of disappointing that it's, it strikes a a court here in this chamber. So I'm just gonna leave it at that for this evening. But I do appreciate those who spoke upon it and I do appreciate uh our clergy for coming in. Because you would hope it would be uniting us and uh making sure um, you know, we, we look forward as we try to do the people's business here in the chamber. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Trink. There was a question asked to whether or not uh we could be sued or the legality of having an invocation. Could you please respond?
Your citation and I with counsel in Rutherford's reference for rollback here is it is totally constitutional uh to add if you go to a basis. It's been challenged earlier.
Frank, can you speak in your microphone?
It's been challenged earlier to the I C Supreme Court and the court is, yeah, everything that was said earlier is accurate. There's no cause anybody can do anybody this country or anything. That's why we live in the greatest country in the world. But that does not mean there is a claimer report of action or that you are doing anything uh uh counter to law.
Thank you. Mr. Gross, we had several questions. I know that we have the bond ordinance. So if we could speak to the questions regarding the streets and how those streets will be identified when we come to the actual bond ordinance that may give us an opportunity to get to the people's business. Um, and then there were some additional questions. Um. I I guess I'll go back to Mr. Trink again, and while we're two attorneys at the workshop, uh Ms. Rudin inquired about uh how we identify our attorney. So if you could speak to that.
Uh, again, we've been working on the tree ordinance for quite a while. Uh, we had a Zoom conference months ago that the councilwoman, Gervin Michael, participated in and we continue to work on it with the, Mr. Rick has spent probably enormous amount of time, including in our office, Mr. Jingero was primarily involved, Scribner. So obviously, Mr. Jingero, just like Mr. Moon was primarily involved in cannabis, Mr. Jingero has been involved in. There there was no extra fee or charge uh of my uh for attending those meetings by you and Mr. Jingero.
Thank you.
The actual work that he does on the ordinance research, putting in wrong ordinance uh is separate, but in terms of attending the meeting, you know.
Thank you very much.
Uh, can I like to comment?
If you can just give me an opportunity to finish asking my questions out.
Sure, it was about what he was saying.
Okay, sure.
So instead of going back, so just to reference or preference what uh Mr. Trank said. Yes, we did work together. I believe it was in April or March um and had a meeting and then our members of our Green West Orange reached out and wondered why, you know, the administration wasn't working with them. Um, and so then myself and other colleagues without violating OPMA met separately with members of our green who are advocates of the tree ordinance and making sure that we do what's right for the people, for protecting our trees and the canopy. Um, they have worked with the environmental commission as well, as well as our um forester. Um, and so I just want to preface it that yes, did work with Mr. Trank and his colleagues up until the debacle uh that happened with the contracts, then there's no longer contracts. So the majority of administration, of the council stopped working with um colleagues or anyone from Mr. Trank's firm, just because there wasn't a contract. But now we are working with them because we are in litigation and the judge has ordered until there's been a decision decide in October eleventh or then he can continue in the capacity to be our township attorney and that his firm may continue to do work. So there was a pause because there was no contract and now based on the order by the judge, we are working with him again. We really do hope to work with you, Mr. Trank and Mr. Jingero, and that you guys do look at the version by our Green West Orange that three of us had worked on with them and the environments commission and uh our forester, and you can look at that version, clean it up and then get it back to us. So, thank you.
Thank you. I think Mr. Trank um stated at the last meeting that he would do exactly what you are asking. He said it would not be done for the fifth meeting because we met on August thirty first uh preceding a holiday weekend. I think he did commit uh to making sure that was available to us at the meeting on the nineteenth. Thank you, Mr. Trink.
Again, our Green West Orange should never ask to meet with the law department at all. And we stand ready to meet with any community organization that has once given.
Thank you very much.
It's like the law from work with all the council.
Thank you. Uh, okay, so we have a new interim business administrator, so it this. I'm, I'm still not done, if I may continue without interruption, please. I'm not done. I'm just gonna introduce our new business interim business administrator and ask him to answer a question that we were talking about with the ATVs. Thank you. So um Chief, we were talking about the ATVs, the ordinance and some of the um ideas and concepts that were introduced. Can you again just give us an update on what the eternal general's order is and how we can govern ourselves accordingly?
I apologize. I can't hear you with this air conditioning, but uh.
ATVs.
The ATVs, okay, that, to me, that's an easy, so I read this during the ongoing public session and it's a resolution, it's not an ordinance. There were some ordinances passed in, I know Jersey City did it where you can't fuel up in unregistered ATVs. I've never seen that anywhere in West Orange. Cities have different nuances and vibes, so maybe it happens there and it was worthwhile for them to do that. It could also be that sometimes it's better to do things that maybe don't have a real reaction, but at least lets the public know that you care and willing to do something. I I say to my own people all the time, somebody's doing something better than doing nothing. With that said, this is a resolution asking the state to allow police officers to pursue these vehicles. I'm vehemently opposed because they are not going to stop. I was here through the eighties when cars were stolen not to go to chop shops or be shipped overseas strictly for the entertainment. So all we do by doing that, state allow or allows, I don't think they will anyway, is we have the ante, we make it even more exciting. These are kids, they don't have the maturity that you and I might have to realize the horrific consequences that can result in chasing them. So again, they're not gonna stop. They're not gonna stop until they crash. And when they crash, bad things happen. You know, you're gonna talk about young kids that brain damage, that are paralyzed and probably dead. Is is that what we want to do because they're coming through town annoying us? I don't know what the answer is. I'm not saying you do nothing, but I don't think this is the answer.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Gross, any additional comments from, questions from my colleagues?
Um.
Before we get to the agenda.
Just, I know you want to do the capital later, right? Um, just to on on a, on a few issues that were discussed. In reference to uh Two Hundred Mount Pleasant, um I completely agree that the things that we were hearing um sound like they would be potential violations, um but it's certainly something we need to, number one, find out what the facts are. Number two, look at our ordinances and so this whole, I know um Mr. Smarold has already had some conversations with them of the the people that were here to complain and we'll continue that and to try to vet that out and see, you know, exactly what the situation is. I would, don't want to project um right now at this point in time, we just don't have enough information to do that, but we certainly will um move forward with that. Um, uh, councilman, you asked about the rules for thrive through or 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 other terminology. We'll, we'll, we'll get you the ordinance and send that out to you so that you have it, so that there's no ambiguity about that. Um, and we will certainly look into the trash cans issues. And so the rest is capital questions, so will they, I'll let, wait on that.
Are there any additional questions?
Sure. Well, since you introduced Chief Abbott as our, as the new interim BA, I do have a question about that. Chief, I respect you. I've known you since I was a little girl. The questions I have are just honest, they're just questions I have. Isn't it a conflict of interest for you to be the interim BA and chief of police?
I don't see one if you want to come with that conflict.
From, from a financial perspective, because you would, the the BA's rules, hand handling finances, working with CFO, finances of the police department.
So the CFO will still handle the finances. I won't, I won't be involved in the finances.
And then in terms of qualifications, like background, do you, do you have, because I don't know what your background, I've known you as a little girl. I don't know what your resume is other than chief of police. Do you come from a finance background, treasury?
So again, that's why we have a CFO. The 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 BA is not the CFO. They're two distinct different roles.
Um, hold on one second. There is something that I would like to read. Okay. So the business administrator shall be appointed, I'm reading our our code, shall be appointed as provided by the charter. The business administrative administrator shall possess a degree from a four-year college university, recognized standing, shall be chosen solely uh on the basis of his or her actual experience and or knowledge of accepted practice and respect to the duties of office as here and after set forth and shall have at lea- at least four years of reasonable experience in an executive administrative position, which you have. Um, but my question is under powers and duties, you will assist the mayor in preparation of the township budget. Do you have ex- experience with the finances of the town to budget? It's because I know that's when Mr. Gross was the BA, he handled all that as the BA and CFO, even though it's supposed to be separation of power.
While Jack Saris was the BA for many years, Mr. Gross handled that and before Mr. Gross, Mr. Coleman handled that. So every BA that's not a CFO, anyone in New Jersey is gonna rely heavily on their CFO to understand the the finances of any budget, the economics of the budget, both in the the revenue stream and the expenditure side.
Yeah. Do you feel confident ma- maintaining and continuing to review and analyze the budget operations, work programs and cost of municipal services? This is all in our code.
I understand. I mean, will you think about?
Because we're gonna get, I'm I'm be honest with you. When other people find out about this in town, there's gonna be a lot of pushback. They're gonna say, you know, I can already imagine. Eh, well, we like you, but it's like, but what's happening? Like, why is the mayor doing this? Like, is it?
We're gonna continue this conversation under new business. Under, but we don't have this on the agenda right now, so we're gonna continue with your questions under new business or depending matters.
Well, I'll wait for pending matters then. I mean, it makes sense just to dust it now and get it out of the way. We're already talking about it.
Yeah, Council President, you just brought it up.
I I just announced his position, but you're now asking questions and we have an agenda and that's under pending matters. I I mean, I just made an announcement, but.
Under pending matters.
If you have questions, we can have it under new business or pending matters.
Council President, I also have an in- session that is gonna specifically speak to this.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Just for the benefit of the public again. Thank you.
No problem.
Okay, Madam Clerk.
No. Excuse me. We were not done with the questions that were posed to Mr. Trink. That's. If you have more questions, councilman, please go ahead. So uh and it may be more appropriate for you, Mr. Smarold, to answer. Um, the concerns about the gym fees and the um pool fees being mandatory, is that? Is that, how how do, yeah, what is that? What is that?
David, um, just to let you know, the Two Hundred Mount Pleasant app has been um a fairly responsive um landlord for many, many years. We had an issue with them about three years ago where they started doing this process of adding water fees. I spoke with them. We actually spoke to our legal. We actually stopped them from the time when they realized that when they have a new contract coming, a new lease, they added as part of their fees. This whole new matter that was brought to light tonight, I spoke to two of the residents last week. Um, they told me about the water fees and that this was something that was happening again. I will look into it. They never mentioned about the filth, the garbage, rats, things of that nature. They never mentioned about the pool fees and they never mentioned about the uh the gym fees themselves. That's, that's new tonight. So I met with them out in the hallway just now. They're gonna bring me copies of their previous lease and their current lease to see if we can match them up and I'll speak to legal. But we did have an issue with them several years ago. Management listened to us. They stopped that practice. I can't tell you, as as Mr. Gross said before, we need to look into this further. This is the information I have for you at hand that I can, and and I'll, I'll, I'll reach out to them tomorrow. And I already notified uh the Director Adams and and Director Fonzino to make sure we send inspectors out to the property.
And I want to be very careful. Uh, one counts first and I mentioned selective enforcement, which it would not be. But we will do, just like we do on any complaint by anyone, we'll follow up on it.
Right. It's an allegation. It's an allegation. Our inspector is gonna go out there and take a look and then they're gonna report back to us the findings.
Thank you. That is um acceptable. Thank you very much, Mr. Smarold.
Any additional questions, sir?
Um, I have to review my notes to see now, because.
Madam Clerk.
Just give me a second, please. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Trink, regarding the revaluation, are you familiar with um the systemic racism involved in home appraisal values? Uh, particularly for African Americans?
I read some of the articles that you referenced.
So how how can we, what what if anything are we doing to make sure that uh we do whatever we can to prevent that from showing up adversely in this process?
Again, I'll be glad to uh look into it, see if any communities have got anything with regards to that issue. Because the way I've read about it is, I think, similar to what you've read about it in terms of appraisals when you're bank financing or whatnot, lowering them.
Lowering them. I have not heard from the Congress. I'm not saying that what you're saying is is wrong. I just haven't read any articles on that. If you do have any, I would, I'd like to. Certainly, I think part of the ways that I would suggest, and I'm more than willing to meet with you separately or to ask for a presentation. So Mark Kendricks, as you know, has been the town's uh valuation expert for years and years. He gets involved in all the tax appeals, so I think it would be a relevant topic to discuss with him. We also do have two tax appeal counsel uh that have represented his town for a number of years. Mr. Matthews with regard to residential, Mr. Blau with regard to commercial. So I'd consult with them. So I I totally agree with you that it's a extremely important topic.
Thank you. Yeah, I I haven't read anything on it either. I I am, it it what has been brought to me is anecdotal. Um, but you know, since it's been now enunciated publicly, I think it's it's worth at least understanding if it has uh surfaced, if there is a concern, and if there is a concern, what we can do to mitigate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to note that the reevaluation process is not an appraisal. It is an an evaluation of size, dimensions, and rooms. I think there is a real concern that I have often talked about with the appraisal process. But this is not an appraisal that we're having done. Um, so I think that there is perhaps not the primary concern of valuation. Um, it's just a different process.
Excellent point. So it's it's interesting. We could all agree it's not gonna be. Um, but it's interesting cuz as we know, the state orders these revows, you know, as you know, the last administration floored forever and ever and as the taxes are said, it was ordered. So eleven years is probably on the far end um of of when these revows occur.
But I I mean, I do, it's a valid concern, the appraisal process in uh black and brown communities. It's certainly documented as being um concerning, so.
Yeah, and and Mr. Trink, it is, w- we don't wanna fight yesterday's fight. So if there is systemic racism in this part of the process, we wanna know. We don't know. So if there's a way to know, yeah, if there's an objective measure, we'd like to know.
One of the things that that I um I expect that we will do is um which not all towns have done, but I think it's important, is to publish all of the values. Uh, as opposed to uh residents just knowing their own value, because this really is all as that is your property compared to other people's properties. Um, you know, in terms of relative value. So that's certainly would, I believe, would go a long way to help um the transparency of this and then so that that during the process and I'm there's things additional that that may be able to be done, but at the very least, if if a property owner looks at a house that's similar to their house and sees a difference, they have the ability to say, hey, why my house and what, why is this the case? Then they can, they can argue that with the adjusters, so.
Well, I'm just glad you're thinking in that vein right now. And uh, you know, I I expect that we'll get some good outcomes now that we're focused on.
I've from the from the very beginning of the process, I've made it clear that that that's gonna be our expectation. Uh, I I've ju- I've seen it done both ways and 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 there there are a lot of people that that don't like disclosing it all, it all, just because it it causes a lot more questions. But at the end of the day, it's a much better product.
I was gonna, I I wanted to just comment on that if I may. Um, I think that's a completely transparent process. Typically, in my industry, what happens after any community does a reavow, my phone starts ringing off the hook and they want comps. And so if we're going to publish all of the comparables, which means all of our ratables in the town, then there is no secrecy that is completely transparent and I absolutely support that. Absolutely. Thank you. All right, uh now, Madam Clerk.
Okay, time to review the consent agenda. Approval of minutes of previous meeting, public meeting eight twenty-two, twenty-three, and executive session seven twenty-six, twenty-three. Uh, report of township officers, update on the West Orange Public Library, uh Mr. Smaraldo.
If you can give us an update in like three minutes, we'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Good evening. Uh, from last report, uh the rooftop units are now installed. We're still waiting for most of the parts to arrive with one's gonna be shipped next week on the fourteenth. Uh, you can see some of the pictures here. Actually, that was last week's picture. I apologize, I couldn't get updated pictures. I was uh out last week and this week. Um, anyway, I went by there today. There's furniture in there. There is, there's all kinds of good stuff. It's getting close. We had a meeting with our our construction board last week, September eleventh, this Monday. Our books and material are all gonna be started being delivered. They anticipate a seven to ten day installation period. Uh, we will have to worry about still getting the the uh air conditioning balanced and everything else. Uh, we still are uh troubled by the delivery of the glass and the uh, you know, the units that are gonna be inside and exterior. So we're hoping to get that in by the end of the month. And the the outside decking should begin the patio work. It should be commencing fairly soon. We did it up like we mentioned before about the fence. We're trying to get those things worked out so that that fencing will be there. It won't affect the TCO. But we will make sure that that it moves forward.
And TCO for the public is temporary.
I've said it so many times, I think they know it better than I do. So so um and lastly, uh one of the things we did discuss and collectively collaboratively with the the board uh president, the board director and all of us uh uh on our committee, uh we're looking for, we're anticipating and hopefully opening a a mid October fifteen soft opening. That that's what we're shooting for, but again, it's gonna be dependent on our materials that are coming in. So but that's where everybody's pushing for this very hard.
Thank you. We appreciate the update. Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, reading of petitions and communications and bids.
Correspondence from Mayor McCourtney submitting for advice and consent, the reappointment of the Honorable Dawn M. Donahue as municipal judge for the township of West Orange for a three-year term effective September fifteenth, twenty twenty-three through through September fourteenth, twenty twenty-six. Uh, bills, uh.
Today's bills, nine five.
Resolutions or any resolutions being pulled this evening?
Yes.
But.
Three, two, five.
Two, five, okay.
Is that the only one? Alex, do you have any other?
Nope, not for me.
I I just, um.
Questions?
Comments, um. Are we going to executive session today?
Yes, we are. Are we not going into executive session? Um, can I ask why?
Why did they vote?
There's there's no real update to provide. Um, the BA is now been announced. So you have that part is only discussing executive session on that. With regard to chemistry cannabis issue, I have to consult with with uh uh the chief about that issue and what is pending on that. I'm not familiar with any issue, would he share negotiation on that? And there is nothing to report new on films for the others.
Okay, thank you. So the administration is removing three twenty-four dash twenty-three. Thank you.
And here I was gonna say thank you for including all those things. He said it's a lot, okay?
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Uh, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda is implemented.
Three, three twenty-five dash twenty-three, resolution commemorating the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary of the establishment of the United States as an independent nation and authorizes the appointment of a committee to develop a plan for this commemoration that will promote the maximum involvement of our residents, neighborhoods, businesses, schools, civic organizations, and institutions in the commemorations. Uh, Councilwoman Governor Michael, you pull this?
Yeah, so I have some concerns cuz in reading it, again, it states that be it further resolved, the township council commemorates the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary. That be it further resolved, the township council authorizes the appointment of a committee. Be it further resolved, the township council further urges all residents. But that's not the case. It's the mayor. I mean, no one's talked to the council as a whole about this. This is now coming on for a second time cuz we've brought these these concerns up the last time this came on. It's the mayor that wants to do it. It's the administration. So should read that the mayor commemorates or the township as a whole commemorates this anniversary, that the mayor authorizes the appointment of the committee, not the council. Um, I think, my opinion, I don't support this. I think that this is better through the Board of Ed and the schools versus the council. That's just my uh opinion. So I I do not support this this resolution based on the way it's written.
Can I have, um, go ahead, Councilwoman?
So to your point being, you're saying it's the mayor, so speaking to the mayor and I had it called Mr. Fagan being our also township historian. So it would make sense where this come through the township way for various reasons. Um uh, this uh this uh with our, we're trying to become a a destination. Um, a visitor's destination. So this plays into all that and with some tourism grants that um I've been working on with um downtown alliance and uh with some marketing grants that we're trying to get. So this will all tie nicely into it. The part that I'm confused with the resolution is to my understanding of the process of this is just to pass the resolution to basically say we're interested in this with the state. A committee wouldn't form yet until we know what's required of us. And maybe, Council President, could Mr. Fagan speak a little bit to this on what has been done and
Please do.
Not done so far?
Uh, thank you, um, Council President, for the opportunity. I just clear up exactly what uh Resolution two fifty is and what it isn't. A Revolution two fifty, uh, what it is and what it isn't. Excuse me. Um, it's a, uh, it was formed by the New Jersey State Legislature in twenty eighteen and its intended purpose is to uh commemorate the uh anniversary of the United States uh and specifically focus on the pivotal role that the Revolutionary War played in New Jersey. Uh, a sample resolution was sent out to many town councils uh to just pass the resolution uh to essentially get on board with the program uh that uh Revolution two fifty will be sponsoring. And what uh it specifically would be, would be to um form a committee to best uh to determine the best representation of how we would uh represent our community. Now, certain communities throughout New Jersey, uh for example, Freehold, the Monmouth Battlefield, Washington Crossing, uh, there was direct connections to uh the Revolutionary War. Uh, but communities like West Orange should not be discounted because even though no battles during the Revolutionary War were fought here, we have some pretty uh decisive and uh uh connections. Uh ancillary connections, you might say. For example, the um uh the idea of American independence divided a family here. Uh, one one fought for the British. Uh, Tory Corner is named after that family. Uh, the Williams Clock, which uh has uh dates to colonial times uh is in my possession. Uh, and there's also uh Jomima Condit, who was um he, uh, she was a young girl, lived in Pleasantale during the Revolutionary War, and she kept a diary. And that diary uh um journals, the um, how the news reached what was West Orange today of the um uh news, April eight, seventeen seventy-five, of the battles of Lexington and Concord, uh the so-called shot heard around the world. So that diary is in the is in the possession of New Jersey Historical Society. So if we were to, if if you were to approve this resolution, we would get on board. We could perhaps petition the New Jersey Historical Society to have that diary on display uh in three years during the um during the uh celeb- uh during the commemoration. And I and I and I say that because this is not a celebration. Uh, this is a commemoration. And there's many considerations for that. I'd be glad to discuss uh offline with you. Um, so it Revolution two fifty is, there's no costs involved to this. It's just that our town is gonna participate and become a destination um uh for um those who uh wanna come and 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 explore the various uh Revolutionary War sites and the role that they played. And they're not always gonna be, as they say, in the form of a of a more tangible uh locations such as a battlefield or something. We have these little things in West Orange here uh that are very unique to West Orange, and they could be set up in the new library, they could be set up in a business, they can be set up. But the but the committee that would be formed as a result of passing this resolution would determine how we would best display it. So I appreciate your your comments on on the school and and on the schools, and perhaps that might even be where this ultimately winds up. But uh it's not gonna wind up anywhere unless the council considers this resolution to make West Orange a uh destination for uh twenty twenty-six, which it seems it's three years away. I don't know that I'll even be here. But um uh we, this is in the planning stages for that very person. If you have any questions, I'll do my best to answer them.
So, uh, Council President, if I may, the, one of the issues raised at our last meeting was how the committee was going to be comprised?
So my conversation with the mayor indicated that the committee will and instructions will be forthcoming if we opt in. Um, there is not instructions, to my knowledge, and Mr. Fagan, please um help me if I'm inaccurate or communicating incorrect information.
I read the resolution today, uh, the the sample resolution issued by the state. And uh my understanding is that upon adoption of this resolution, that the um uh a committee would then be formed, not formed before. We have to have the resolution in place in order to form a committee. And as I say, the purpose of the committee is is really to just determine the best way to participate in Revolution two fifty.
I think one of the concerns for me um is that we were I'm sorry, you weren't finished?
No, I wasn't.
Uh, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Um, I understand that point, that we have to vote to opt in and then a committee will be chosen. Because of the language in the resolution, what was pointed out to the mayor was that we'd like to know if the council is going to have a voice in appointing people to that committee. And what the mayor is essentially asking us to do, and this is not just for you, Mr. Fagan, but your point brought it up. Um, the mayor is asking us to do is pass a resolution that says the township council does this and the township council does that with no commitment from the mayor to allow the township council to have a voice in the formation of the committee. And that was clearly communicated in writing and in multiple meetings now. And so, but we're still here. So, you know, at some point, we've gotta if if there's a legitimate concern that's expressed by the town council, that has to be addressed. It can't just be disregarded or ignored. And as far as I can tell, it's been ignored. Nothing in this resolution speaks to that and nothing in the email she sent back to us, at least as far as I can recall, and y'all can correct me if I'm wrong, says that we have a, the ability to appoint people to the committee. And do I recall that improperly? Can someone correct me?
I haven't seen anything, and I feel the same way you do.
So if we can't have, if we don't, if we don't have the ability to appoint someone to a committee that we're authorizing, I don't wanna vote for it. And I would think that would be a travesty because we have a very rich military history here in West Orange. And this, to your point, Mr. Fagan, costs nothing. It's gonna be a commemoration. It's gonna bring people, if we opt in and we are successful in our petition to the Historical Commission, it will bring people to West Orange that otherwise might not come. And most of what we talk about is attracting people here. So I'm, I offer motion that we table it again until the mayor is clear whether or not she is willing to accept the town council having appointees to this committee.
I second that motion.
I I can't provide absolute clarity on that, and your concerns are legitimate.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Fagan.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And I'm deeply sorry.
Mr. Fagan, I do have a question.
It's non-debatable motion on the floor. There's no more discussion. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Well, I withdraw for further question.
Yeah, just a quick question. You said there's three years, so we can table this. There's no rush, right?
I think there's a deadline for the.
Size, I don't know if there's no rush, but um I I.
There is a deadline that we have to opt in.
To come to the celebration. Me too.
Okay, yes. Yeah, okay, yeah.
Why don't you establish a body of making this up, five people and, you know, four or one of the mayor, if she gets the chair, and three or one of the council, or larger. Do you each want a person? Do you want a larger body? It's nothing, right?
It's a recommendation to make an amendment to the motion, I mean, to the resolution.
So, so Councilwoman Gabor Michael's concern about the school board, uh, if I understand you, Mr. Uh.
I mean, uh, first, it could be one of the committee members.
Right. And, 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 and we, um, so if we were to say, um, for example, the, a committee comprised of superintendent of schools, or I'm just.
Or his designate.
He's way too busy.
I'm not, it's the, it's the point I'm, right? We can designate or we can, if, as long as we agree, have three votes on the amendment, right? It's only three votes for the amendment.
But to my understanding, Councilman, excuse me, and to my understanding, I, I'm not sure if the state's going to dictate that with, with, once we opt in. So again, I, I, I agree with you that the information is lacking. So I, I totally get that. Um, I'm not opposed to a, a committee. I don't think the mayor herself would be after talking to her. I think she's under the impression we vote for this and then they're going to send us the information on what we need the committee to be and then we'll move forward with it.
Are there any towns that did adopt this resolution?
I'm sure there.
Like, have we reached out to them to see what the guidelines they received for this committee?
Sure, there is, but. There are, there are no, there are no communities that have already received the guidelines. There's an opt-in deadline and once the opt-in deadline.
Yeah, yeah, well, that's.
Information will go out to all communities that have agreed to participate.
Okay.
Do we know the opt-in deadline?
It's not a rolling basis. There is a deadline. And so basically, I, I didn't ask for the deadline. I was just told that there was a deadline. So, um, uh, you know, I, I was also told that I don't know what the committee or what the state is going to dictate the committee. There's no reason why, um, the council members wouldn't have some input. Um, I, I think this goes.
The mayor.
Back to, you know, we just have to have some element of trust. I don't think she's trying to keep anything away from us. But at the end of the day, you know, everyone is entitled to their opinion and, and how they choose to vote and support.
I suggest don't overthink this.
Yeah.
But to me, and I mean, I, I understand the points you're making, but at the end of the day, you know, the, this is going to cost money. The council holds the purse strings on the money. I mean, this is going to evolve. So.
Of course. All right. Yeah, I'll add another, she, she, she had her hand up first.
So what if the deadline passes? And we then vote on it, wait to see what other towns and other people are doing and then vote on it and then get the deadlines. We can always just do it ourselves, you know?
This is done by an organization from Governor Phil Murphy. And it, again, the process is there's an opt-in deadline and we opt in and we get further instructions.
We're going to vote on it. We should know when the deadline is. Can we find out what the deadline is and we table this?
Yeah, I'd like to see what the whole thing is about, as I don't really understand.
I just have one comment and again, we make things a lot harder than we really need to make things. And I get it. I know you're, I know the exercise that's going on here. Make sure you cross your t's and dot your i's, administration. I get all that. But is that the bicentennial or, uh, capsule or says this? So, so when I was on the school board, when I was on the school board and township, something similar, they, they're gonna, and I, I, I get you're saying school board should be involved. We were involved. You know, I was on that side of things at that time where the town invited us in, we were all involved. And, uh, I can't see this being any different, but to your point, you know, you want all the information when we have to vote on something, administration, uh, you need to supply that.
Was the request for additional information, even though, Mr. Gross, um, was the request for any additional information, um, received from any of my colleagues or any unreadiness? I mean, I realize that, I realize that we asked for the composition of the committee, but my understanding is that we don't have that information. And until we opt in, the state isn't going to give us the directives. But the mayor did not want to dictate that each of us would have an opportunity to appoint someone to the committee because that may not be in, um, concert with what the state requires. Is there a possibility if we were to approve this resolution as it's written, can we at some point come back and amend it so that once we get the guidelines from opting in? If we want to then commit as a, as a body and say, well, each of us should have an appointment to the committee, is that something we can do after the fact?
I suspect if, if you're formally going to create it, I don't even know whether it may even need to be done by ordinance or not. But certainly, like I said, you're, you, the council is going to, is going to control the, the purse strings on any activity. The council will have an opportunity to have it. I, again, I, I, I just urge you not to, not to overthink.
I certainly would not.
This is a simple celebratory resolution.
What do you anticipate the cost is going to be?
So. You won't know that until the thing gets going.
Right. And we, we can vote, uh, we can, um, we can, we can, so we do reserve the right to vote against, um, the budget or modifier or whatever the budget down the road, but I understand not overthinking it. This to me is such a minor thing that for the mayor to just comply, hey, we'd like to know if you are supportive of, uh, uh, members to the committee being appointed by council members. That's, it's not a new request. It was, it was issued the very first time this was brought up. It was discussed in email amongst all of us. Like, just state your, your position on that. Right? Because obviously if she's not supportive of it, no matter what we do, she still has the chair and the controlling. Uh, we're Falkner Act Plan B type town. She still has the chair and she'll have the controlling majority. So we don't want to waste our time. We just want to know. So I, I'll offer a motion that we table this until we get clarity from the mayor, her position on the composition of the committee.
I, um, spoke to the mayor directly and asked that question that we're all asking. And any of us could have picked up the phone to call her. Hold on. And the mayor indicated to me that she did not want to identify the conceptualization of the committee until she had confirmation from the state. She did not want to accept that, yes, each of us has an appointment. If the state comes back and says something different. So I did ask her directly if each of us can have an appointment. And her response to me was, of course you can. It can be as many people as want to, but I want, I need to know what the state requirements are before we start with.
The mayor is, uh, has called and has requested permission to speak.
Yes, absolutely.
Uh, Mayor McCartney, welcome to the meeting.
So, thank you. Thank you all. If you would like to amend that resolution to include the council and a Board of Ed representatives, please do. I'm not, I'm just trying to find, I'm just trying to get the township to participate in this. It was brought to my attention by the superintendent at the Thomas Edison National Historic Park. I thought it was a wonderful idea to promote the town with the National Historic Park on our main street. Anyone will be welcome to attend. We have residents, we have residents that have already reached out, residents themselves that have already expressed interest. So the council and Board of Education would absolutely be involved.
Thank you, Mayor.
Excuse me, uh, and I, Mayor, would you be opposed? Because I like to recommend Downtown Alliance. We have that, um, marker, uh, the walking tour and I, I, I'd like to have somebody on there to enhance that project, uh, for the visit, uh, destination, visitor destination, uh, marketing grant that we're working on.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
We're not trying to exclude anyone. Think of it just like, just as any other town-wide event, we get as many people as, we know, let me just make the analogy of, uh, the Juneteenth event. We had people from the library, Luna Stage, the Arts Council, the Rec Department, just about every department was involved in that. We can do the same with this, but until we opt in as a participating community, we don't really know what they expect of us. We're making it up as we go. And I, when the superintendent asked me if I wanted to participate, I immediately said yes. And I called Joe Fagan, just as Councilwoman Castellino said, because I knew that he would have insight into this.
All right. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Are there any, so it, we had a second motion that was moved and properly second to table this resolution. Do you want to continue with the table on the resolution?
I withdraw that motion.
Thank you. Are there any amendments to the resolution in its current form?
Yes. So in the second to last be a further resolved clause, it reads currently that the Township Council authorizes the appointment of a committee.
What page are we on?
The last, it's only the second page, the back. Yeah. So I'd like to put a comma there to include an appointee from each council member, comma, and an appointee from each Board of Ed member, comma, to develop a plan for this commemoration that will promote the maximum involvement of our residents and it continues on.
Okay, so let me use feedback.
Why would you do the same for the board of ed?
I'm trying to get it done tonight. That was a request that was made. I'm happy to honor it.
Because I think it's important for the Board of Ed to be involved with this as well.
Do you want to do three and three?
That's not how they operate. They operate.
Yeah, I was getting raised.
Operate through the, through, through the.
So they could do a consensus appointment, maybe. The Board of Ed could.
They don't even function like that.
Like us. They would operate through the, excuse me, I'm a former Board of Education member. Okay, so they operate through the superintendent. The superintendent would appoint the person for the district or the persons, if they want more than one, uh, appointment. It's the superintendent. They don't micromanage their superintendent.
So I, I think that we, with all due respect, should table this until we, we speak to someone on the Board of Ed and, and decide if they want to be about, involved in the committee. How many people, maybe each Board of Member does want someone on there.
Maybe what we can do is, we can always amend it and add them. As long as the town council is, is included in the process, I'm, I'm satisfied. Would that be okay to, to? Then we can talk to them and figure out what their process is or how they'd like to participate and we can amend it later.
Okay. So can you reread the amendment, please?
So, uh, Mr. Trink, that second to last be a further resolved clause that the Township Council authorizes the appointment of a committee, comma, to include an appointee from each council member, comma.
Okay, say to include an appointee by each council person.
Say it however is best, uh, you know, to develop a plan, so on and so forth.
Yeah. And, and do you want to add what the mayor said and to encourage maximum community?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's in there already. To promote the maximum involvement of our residents, neighborhoods, businesses.
So we will the rest, okay?
So it's been properly moved. Do I have a second on the amendment? Can we make one amendment at a time? Thank you. Is there a second?
Wait, 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 wait. Do you have the Downtown Alliance? Do we have a, do?
What?
Why are we?
I recommend we vote on the amendment that Councilman Rutherford just started.
Thank you. Thank you.
There's a second?
Yes.
So it's been moved and properly seconded that we amend the resolution to the language that reads.
That reads after the second, be a further resolved, that the Township Council authorizes the appointment of a committee, comma, to include an appointee by each council person, comma, to develop a plan for this commemoration that will promote the maximum involvement of our residents, neighbors, businesses, schools, civic organizations and institutions in the commemoration.
Thank you. Are there any objections to this amendment?
No, no, SP voter.
Okay, okay. Okay, no problem.
I'm going to do a roll call.
All right, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gabor Michael?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpah?
Yes.
Council President Williams.
Yes. Are there any further amendments to the resolution?
Yes. Can you include Board of Ed representation on there and that, and then also the Downtown Alliance representation? Yeah.
Is there a second to that? Is there a second to that amendment?
You got to get the language too. So, uh, the way I hear it, it would be after to include an appointee by council, each council person,
Right.
comma, representatives from the Board of Ed, comma.
That actually would be the school district, be the.
Okay, the school district, it's, it's from the school districts and the Downtown Alliance.
Needs.
I got it. I got it.
Yeah, and then.
Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. It's been moved and properly seconded for the addition.
Was the Councilwoman Gabor Michael that gave us the first? Okay, thank you.
And then Councilwoman Scarpah.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, did you want to read that out loud?
So the additional, um, after council person after the comma, let's say, and representatives from the school district and the Downtown Alliance.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Gabor Michael? Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpah?
Yes.
Council President Williams?
Yes. I'm sorry. I need to finish with the motion on the resolution.
Sure.
Thank you. Now, is there a motion to pass the resolution with the amendments?
No, because I have further amendments, so she doesn't.
Can I ask a question? Why are we doing all the amendments separately?
That, I think, let's just keep it focused, you know, that. Can it, we will have to vote on the full amended.
No, I didn't know.
But because we didn't know we had consensus, I don't even.
Oh, okay, got you, got you. That's fine. I just, um.
So in the first be, uh, further resolved on the second page, I think I should read that the township commemorates its two hundred fiftieth anniversary, not just Township Council, because it's the mayor, it's the Board of Ed. It's everyone as, everyone in the town.
I agree.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah.
The second thing is that the the third further resolve, that the township further urges all its residents, or if we could say the mayor and the council or the, I, I don't know how you want to word it.
Can we just?
I just, I don't, I shouldn't just say the council, right? We want, and the mayor wants and.
Can I just, can we just strike council and it just say township?
Or that read funny?
Because this is generic, so we, yeah, just comment, just, uh, edit it to our.
Just strike council and, and have it township. Okay, thank you.
Okay, yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just edit it for us, yeah.
All right. Any additional changes or amendments? Thank you.
There's a, there's a, there's a, no, 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 that one's, that one's.
That's fine. Wherever says township, uh.
Thank you.
Well, that second be a further resolved clause keeps the council after it. It keeps it there because that's what we're actually authorizing, that the appointment of a committee includes these amendments we just made.
Council's the same.
So just in the first and the third be a further resolved clause, are we striking council?
Well, I'm sorry, um, but I think Councilman, I think that's what you're saying. This, I mean, usually you put that to council where it says now therefore be resolved by the Township Council. You see it is there at the top, you know, all caps, bold?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. So I don't think we need.
All right, okay.
That's why I agree with Councilwoman Gabor Michael, we need council. With it, you, it's your resolution.
All right, we can take it out, all three spots if that's what you choose.
So I'm going to leave it in the bold face.
Uh huh.
No, but so, so even in that first, now there be resolved by the township, it should be resolved by, the council should be removed there. I think it should be now there for.
We're the governing body. We're the governing body and we're voting on the resolution.
I get what you're saying.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I think everywhere else, you're, it can just say township.
Thank you.
Okay.
Um, I move for the acceptance of the resolution with the amendments.
Second. Okay.
All right.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gabor Michael?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpah?
Yes.
Council President Williams?
Yes.
Let's hope we're all still here when this committee starts working.
Brother, we, we're taking years off our life, these meetings.
You do. Well, I'm here. I just forget the.
No, I'm talking about just being alive, brother. It's almost eleven o'clock now.
Ordinance is on second and final reading, twenty-eight oh nine dash twenty-three, and ordinance amending and supplementing chapter seven, traffic subsection seven dash thirty-two point two, restricted parking zones and seven dash thirty-two point one, handicap parking on streets of the revised general ordinances of the Township of West Orange.
Is there, is there a motion to? No, no, no.
Is there a motion?
Yeah, is there a motion to introduce on second and final?
Thank you.
All right. So Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
All right. And then, wait, no, I didn't. I'm just trying to get a motion, so, so sorry. All right, now I'm going to do the roll call. Councilwoman Castellino?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Gabor Michael?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpah? Councilwoman Scarpah, did you say yes?
Yes.
I'm so sorry. I didn't hear you. Council President Williams?
Yes. Is there anyone from the public that wants to, um, have public comment on ordinance twenty-eight oh nine dash twenty-three on second and final reading? Mr. Fagan, is there anyone on Zoom?
Council President seeing none in the Zoom audience.
Public comment is now closed. Colleagues, do you have any comment on twenty-eight oh nine? There being none, Madam Clerk?
Is there a motion to approve twenty-eight oh nine? Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gabor Michael?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpah?
Yes.
Council President Williams?
Yes, the motion passes. Twenty-eight ten dash twenty-three, an ordinance repealing chapter two, section sixty-eight of the revised general ordinances of the Township of West Orange, disclosure of political contributions by certain individuals or. disclosure of political contributions by certain individuals or business entities doing business with the township. I move for the introduction on second and final reading.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Geber Michael?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpah?
Yes.
Council President Williams?
Yes. Is there anyone from the public that wants to speak on ordinance twenty eight ten?
Council President seeing none in the Zoom audience.
Public comment is closed. Colleagues, any comments on twenty eight ten? There being none, I move for the, um, acceptance of twenty eight ten. Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Councilwoman, um, sorry, Councilwoman Castellino, Councilwoman Geber Michael, Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpah?
Yes.
Council President Williams?
Yes, the motion passes. Twenty eight eleven dash twenty three, an ordinance amending chapter two, section fourteen point five and section fourteen point nine of the revised general ordinances of the township of West Orange, appointment of police department, officers and personnel. I move for the introduction on fir-, on second and final reading of twenty eight eleven. Is there a second?
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Geber Michael?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpah?
Yes.
Council President Williams?
Yes, is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on twenty eight eleven?
Uh, Council President seeing none in the Zoom audience.
Public comment is closed. Colleagues, any comments on twenty eight eleven? There being none, I move for the, um,
Approval.
Approval of twenty eight eleven.
Okay, Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Geber Michael? Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpah?
Yes.
Council President Williams?
Yes, twenty eight eleven passes. Ordinances on first reading, twenty eight twelve, an ordinance amending and supplementing chapter seven, traffic subsection seven dash forty six point two, parking prohibited during certain hours on certain days on certain streets, servicing residential land uses except by permit and subsection seven dash forty six point three, parking time limited during certain hours on certain days on certain streets, servicing residential land uses except by permit of the revised general ordinances of the township of West Orange.
I have a question.
I first gotta move it.
Oh, we do, okay.
Yeah.
I move for, I move for the, um, intro-
Introduction.
Introduction on first reading of twenty eight twelve. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Whoever you approve.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Geber Michael?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpah? Council President Williams?
Yes.
Any questions?
Sure.
Um, have the residents on these streets been notified of these changes or letters sent out, um? Was there a survey conducted? Is there support for this from the residents of these streets? And then also for, if you can, I guess, in layman's terms, explain to the general public what this actually is for those who may have not looked at it or don't understand.
Um, our, our process is to do that, so I do not have the documentation of that here tonight. This is introduction, so certainly we'll provide that to you before, uh, adoption of that.
Are there any other questions?
I want to make a comment for me. I want to thank the administration for, uh, responding to the, uh, public comment earlier. I think it was either this year or late last year, uh, with regard to parking in that area in particular. Uh, I think it, it does show that you're being responsive to the issues that residents bring forward, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
Also want to thank, uh, Sajabeth Carbalo, I know in her absence. Um, but, uh, certainly want to thank her for the work she's doing on this and the, um, DPW. That's it.
Thank you. Twenty eight thirteen dash twenty three, bond ordinance providing the various twenty twenty three capital improvements by and in the township of West Orange in the county of Essex, state of New Jersey, appropriating three million, six hundred and twenty four thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars, therefore en authorizing the issuance of three million, six hundred and sixteen thousand, one hundred and fifty dollar bonds or notes of the township to finance part of the cost thereof. Uh, Mr. Gross?
Yeah, this is one of two ordinances, um, that, uh, we have on tonight for first read, two bond ordinances. As council knows, and I, we'll talk about it in more detail at our next meeting, but, uh, we have, uh, over the past couple of years, uh, not moved forward with a number of capital projects for varying reasons. Um, however, uh, we're prepared, and we are prepared at the next meeting, the ma-, the mayor will be here to make a presentation, uh, with her recommendations for the, the capital or the capo- two thousand and twenty three capital budget in total. Um, in particular, looking at not only what new projects, uh, we'd like to look at, but also evaluating previously funded projects, uh, and making her recommendations as to uh, whether or not some of them can be reallocated to reduce the amount of new debt um, that we will look at. However, in the process of putting that together, we've identified for you here tonight two sets of projects, which for, I dare say, for lack of better term, should be pretty much a, a, a no-brainer in the sense that this is stuff, if, if we had to prioritize, we'd say this is number one and number one and a half in terms of the highest priorities. And the number one priorities are, um, these projects that are uh, tied to grants. Um, these are, as you recall, there was, we had an ordinance back in the summer, which ended up, uh, not being adopted. Uh, we did get some leniency from, um, some of the, the, for the grants that were at risk at that point in time. That leniency was pushed back to the end of this year. Um, in, in order to put these projects in the ground, get it, get the, the timeframe of getting an, a, a, an ordinance adopted and, um, getting contracts let out and getting the projects in the ground this year. Uh, we felt it was important to move forward with these projects now. These are, are projects that, um, um, have grants tied to them, that if we do not fund of the, the, the capital side, our, our side of it, those grants will, um, will languish. And at this point, as far as we know, they will expire. Um, so that, that's the one. The second one is, um, and, and by the way, the, that, that particular, the total, although the amount of, of debt is three million, six twenty four, the total is about eight million dollars. We're talking about spending, so we're talking about four and a half million dollars in grants. Uh, that we're, that we're looking to get in the ground, um, and at least started, if not finished, this year. Uh, the, the second ordinance, uh, when you come to it, is a, a, a little shy of two million dollars, and that's all, um, funds to do, uh, environmental work, necessary environmental work that we need to get done as soon as possible. Um, so that, that's the long and short of it. Um, we, we, again, we, we do expect to have a, a further presentation at the next meeting with all the additional projects, uh, with, um, a PowerPoint presentation, uh, outlining them all. And we ask that you introduce tonight, uh, in anticipation of adoption at the next meeting.
I'd like to table them because I, I'd like to see a more comprehensive after we have the uh, approach to this after the capital budget, and I didn't get the detail on this by Friday. I didn't even get it till like the other day. So I haven't had a chance to really look over. You know, I, I really feel like something this important, I've said it many times, I want to make sure that by Thursday or Friday, I have all the detail I need to make a decision.
Keep in mind, you don't have to make a decision this evening as to adopt. This is just, if this is a process, um, and you know, in order to get it before the public, you have to approve it at this meeting, but the adoption would not be for another two weeks. So that.
I, I really feel like I wish I had all the information before, to look at before I vote on it.
I have a question. I have a question. Uh, the site remediation for the formal Biddleman and Selecto site. Can we amend this to include actual addresses so people know where they are? Like, do we own the formal Biddleman site?
Yes.
Okay. And the Selecto site as well?
Central Avenue.
Okay. So can we amend it to include the address? I think it's important. I mean, I keep talking about.
This is, the, these references, the reference from the bond, from the, uh, from the grant. So that's why we use the Santeran out, because they're tied to the grant. I mean, I'll, I'll defer to.
I mean, this has been a, uh, a BDA and a super fund site. So we've been working with the county and working, uh, this is valid.
This is why, I didn't hear you. It's why.
So we've been working on this for, it's probably been a part of a decade. Um, we, uh, foreclosed on Selecta flash, we then bought uh, Biddleman as part of the transaction, and these environmental remediations, the bodies that will allow us. Uh, there's a third apartment building that's been built. The first two were fully rented.
So our total cost for cleanup, I, I, I recall earlier, I think it was this year, four million dollars or so?
We got a grant for four million four.
I thought it was like four million, and we had to pay like a million out of it.
Okay, we had a grant for four million four, and the, I mean, the, the total, I'm sorry, the total project is four million four. The grant's for three million three, and we have to, we have to raise one million one.
Right, so that's this one million one in twenty eight thirteen.
Is in there. That's correct.
Right, and we're doing that in anticipation of a transaction with Mr. Albert.
Well, no, we're doing that to clean up the site. I mean, that, I mean, that, that, that's true, but, but, but that this is, this is so that we don't have to pay. I mean, we, we own the site. If we don't, if we didn't, didn't execute this, we would be responsible for cleanup.
All right.
It's a precursor to what you're saying, because until we do have a clean site, as part of, it's part of the construction.
So when we bought the Biddleman site, did we know it was dirty?
Yes.
And, and, and did? And we, and we bought it for the purpose.
Because if we didn't buy it, nobody else was going to do it. It laid, laid there for twenty four years.
That was a part of this conversation, I think, two, was this two years ago or three years ago?
Well, that's been going on since I've been here, so.
I know, but we did something two or three years ago.
Well, we, this, this was awarded, but, you know, th- these big money grants, you gotta wait for the funding to actually come through. This is the, the next step in, in that process.
All right, so of the four point four total cost, we're on the hook for one point one.
That's correct.
And, and of this three point six in, or three point three in twenty eight thirteen.
One point one of that.
One is for that, and the other two.
And the rest of it is the, is the rest of the
Streets.
Projects from the, from the summer.
From the summer, and that includes the additional grant money that was allocated for that too. And so if we don't do it, we're in jeopardy of losing that grant money. And if, and if we do it, we're, we're paying roughly forty percent of the total cost of both projects. All right, I think I'm clear.
I have a question. We had several residents tonight speak about street paving at Cleveland Terrace, right? Hoover, Garfield, that area. Um, why hasn't Cleveland Terrace been?
Okay, well, these are grants. These are based on what the applications were for, and these are certain, certain, um, criteria that these grants were eligible for, and the, and the engineering department matches that up when we go for it. Your question is in terms of the rest of, not just Cleveland, but the other, all the other projects. That's all that we anticipate will be discussed and recommended at the next meeting. Um, the ma-, like I said, the mayor is gonna make a presentation, uh, of, of the, the, the the balance of the twenty twenty three capital budget.
Just wanted to make sure their concerns are being heard, because they all feel like they've been ignored.
Thank you. I move for the, um, introduction of twenty eight thirteen.
Second.
Okay, Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Geber Michael?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpah?
No.
Council President Williams?
Yes. The motion passes. Twenty eight fourteen dash twenty three, bond ordinance providing for various twenty twenty three capital acquisitions and improvements by and in the township of West Orange in the county of Essex, state of New Jersey, appropriating one million, nine hundred and ninety thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars. Therefore, and authorizing the issuance of one million, eight hundred and ninety five thousand, five hundred dollar bonds or notes of the township to finance part of the cost thereof. I move for the introduction on first.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Geber Michael?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpah?
No.
Council President Williams?
Yes. Pending matters, new matters, council discussion. Um, while we have gas-powered leaf blowers and an older adult advisory board on the agenda, I want to go back to Councilwoman Geber Michael's, uh, inquiries and questions regarding, um, the BA and chief and his qualifications.
She had a question about the ordinance.
Yeah, I just wanted, um, to know in section two, on page two, it talks about site remediation on lakeside and some other streets. How far along does that move? Like, eh, are we, if, if you look at the total cleanup pri-, and I know we've been dealing with some of this stuff for decades.
Yeah.
Right? But if you look at the entire process, at least as expected now, are we halfway through? Are we a quarter of the way, three quarter, like, where are we?
I'm, I'm, I've been asked the question, and we're in the process of putting together, having put together, a complete, um, review of the, the, the conditions so that we can report that back to you. Rather than, rather than me give you my guesstimate, uh, we, we, you know, we have an LSRP that is signed to these sites. So we'll, we'll, we'll get that information, you know, accurate from them.
Did you see my email this morning, Councilman? I sent a, a detailed email this morning.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Geber Michael, you have questions for Chief and his qualifications?
Yeah, I, I, you know, I still think it's a conflict, because you're supposed to oversee the departments. I have a lot of respect for you, Chief, this is not, it's nothing personal, it's just actual questions, and I know it's gonna come up, so I, I figure we might all talk about it now. I really thought, was hoping we'd go into executive session so we can further discuss this behind closed doors, but it was pulled. Um, it.
So the mayor has asked that she be here for this discussion, she'll be here at the next council meeting, and she'll be glad to discuss the.
My question too, it's, it's interim, is it only for sixty days? Because it's an interim?
No.
Because it has to be voted on by the governing body?
Again, uh, it can be presented, uh, for the council to consider, um, as soon as the mayor agrees.
And same thing with, I know that Mr. Smeraldo is now the new director of staff operations. That was in the email that was sent to us, correct, Mr. Smeraldo?
Yes.
Same thing here, based on our code, it has to be approved by the governing body, the council, so.
So I want to review that as to the time.
Please. Okay.
I have some separate concerns, um, and again, this isn't a personal thing. I think both of you know that already, but for the benefit of the public. Um, my concern is, and I've expressed this already, um, we, we're going into contract negotiations, or at least we're supposed to start this month. And the BA, I believe, is supposed to, um, be the face of that negotiation. And so is it, eh, you know, how is that negotiation going to be affected, particularly with police and then, you know, it could also be looked at as a broader public safety if the BA is also the chief of the police. And I don't know the answer to that question, so I'm asking.
So I've always been involved with police negotiations from the township side. Um, more from the, uh, delivery of services, because I want to ensure that nothing goes into a contract that hampers the delivery of services for our residents. The, the mechanics of any kind of a raise that's sought is, is gonna come down to the finances, and that's always gonna be the input of the CFO to determine whether or not that's, you know, the union's gonna be looking for more than township's gonna wanna pay, and the township's gonna wanna pay less than the unions. So, that, that's a function of really, the council, I mean, the council's the one that's going to determine And that's a bunch of, really, the council, I mean, the council is the one that's going to determine whether or not those raises are given, not the business administrator or the CFO.
But also my experience has been the mayor has been here for me involved with those negotiations, so at the end of the day, she will be involved.
And so, um. You know, I just wanted to register that concern because it is a concern of mine, uh, you know, we've got some. Some work to do, uh, with regard to our employees, especially coming off of the very tough budget, no promotions. Um, no raises, uh, we cut out almost all the open positions, so we know we have to do something for our employees. And, uh, I want them at the end of that process to at least feel like it was fair and, uh, so that was my concern. Um, second, second thing is not specific to you, um, Mr. Abbott or you, Mr. Smeraldo. But I hope the administration broadly can appreciate how. Um, it does not look like this is a new administration with a new mayor. We have had multiple people performing multiple roles over the years and in this particular case, we have a new vacancy. Um, and we spoke about this publicly when we forced the separation of the CFO and BA. What we wanted was the BA to report to the mayor, uh, the BA, at least the way I understand it, will be reporting to the CFO. Um, I, I was hopeful that the mayor would establish more of her own team. Instead of essentially using literally every senior leader from the prior administration in the exact same roles or performing multiple roles. So some of the commentary that I've heard today and I've, you know, by three forty, like I assume everyone on this day is. My phone was. Active, um, with comments and questions about the, this announcement. Um. It, I, I don't think, even if the intent or the substance of the change. Um, is completely wholesome and. You know, excellent for this particular moment. Um, the optics don't look good. It, it looks like we're just using the same people, we're just, you know, it's like a, a game of musical chairs and we're putting different people in different roles. I mean, the same people in different roles and shuffling them around. And ultimately, at the end of the day, it's the same people making the, the same decisions. Uh, this new mayor, I encouraged her several times to find her own BA. And I think if we haven't been able to attract someone to a town like West Orange, which has a hundred million dollar budget, hundred and fifty in long-term debt. Hundred fifty million in long-term debt, half a billion dollars worth of development in any given year, a main street that has to be completely redone. Multiple assets that are. I mean, top shelf, if we can't attract a BA. To our town, what does that say about us? Um, and I think, I don't know that that's why she made this decision. Um, but I am concerned, I am concerned by that decision. Um, and, 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 you know, I, I'm actually speechless, I don't know what else to say, so I'll, I'll stop talking now, I, I registered my concerns. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Um, are we gonna discuss the gas powered leaf blowers and the older adult advisory board? I think it's been articulated by the administration, uh, that the gas powered leaf blowers as well as the older advisory. Older adult advisory board, uh, documents would be reviewed.
Yeah, I, I understood the priority of the council from last Thursday is to get on and then the, for the nineteen. Uh, the drive, the drive-through and the tree, so.
And the older adults advisory board, I first submit this on August twenty-first.
We're gonna focus on getting those.
And I asked that it be put on the agenda, it would have been put on the agenda.
The mayor wrote back as well as Mr. Bernstein and wanted an opportunity for this to go be in, be embedded.
We have a meeting coming up, they'll be able to have a meeting and, and talk about it, there's plenty.
And I understand your passion, however, again, process is process. And Mr. Bernstein, as the chair of the committee, in, in addition to the mayor, has said that.
Way in, we have a meeting coming up.
I'm not suggesting that he won't, I'm just.
Stonewall this. There's no reason, there's no reason.
It's not being stonewalled.
Can go on first reading, Mr. Bernstein and the committee has plenty of time to weigh in.
What's the next meeting for the older?
Are very important for this board to function.
And, and I, and it's my understanding, and, and that's fine, but I, it is my understanding and put in writing. I did not read it into record, he, it, it could have been done and he questioned your process. He questioned the fact that all of these recommendations have not been discussed by the committee. These are your recommendations and he asked.
They were.
I'm sorry, if you would stop interrupting me, please, I'm trying to.
What you're saying is inaccurate.
I'm not telling you what's inaccurate, I'm telling you what Mr. Bernstein put in writing, we all have a copy of it for each of us to read. If I can finish my comment, you may certainly have a follow-up. But what I'm suggesting is that Mr. Bernstein asked that the committee have an opportunity to review the recommendations that you put forth.
And they will.
And then I asked you, when is the next older advisory, uh, board meeting?
It's in a, in a couple of weeks, I think the fifteenth or sixteenth, I mean, there's plenty of time.
Okay, well, if the older adults advisory board comes back and presents those changes and they're in agreement with them. Again, that's the process, Councilwoman. Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, oh, no, I'm sorry.
Okay, go ahead.
So just wanted to, um, remind us that we have multiple times put things on first reading that we didn't have. A full agreement on because of the two weeks to kind of go through, we just did something like that tonight with one of these things. And I, I, I just want to say, um, council, so, so, you know, putting it off for first reading, I don't think. I don't think that should be stopped if there's some substantive changes that are recommended, that we are, uh, willing to entertain or accept. And that's another question and that can be handled between first and second reading and it might require going back to first reading. But it, it doesn't. Harm us to put it on first reading right now. Second thing I want to say. Um, I understand that the older adults advisory board wants to weigh in on these rule changes, just want to remind us. Councilwoman Susan Scarpa. Is the leader of creating that body. She, this is, for lack of a better term, her baby. She has come to the council and the council set up some guardrails, some boundaries and some rules and regulations around how that. Body will work. They are an advisory board, they don't have any real, um, they don't have any statutory power at all. They don't, they can't bond anything, they can't make the council or the mayor do anything, they can only recommend. And while they want to weigh in on the rules and, and I'm not opposed to them weighing in on the rules. I don't think their weighing in on the rules supersedes what we do at this table. If, if we as a body agree that we want to increase the number of voices on that board or whatever we agree to. I don't, and even if they didn't want that, if we as a body agree that that's. What's best for that board, then based on our vote, it either happens or it doesn't. So, you know, whether they weigh in or not, or how they weigh in or what they weigh in with. You know, we can consider that over the two weeks between first and second reading. And some of that we may accept and some of that we may reject and either way, whatever we decide will end up being the law.
Well, except, as you well know, um, the mayor has certain powers in his form of government. So what normally we try to do, just like we're trying to do with the tree, that's why I do respect all the input. Is we try to collaborate to come to a happy medium and so the mayor obviously, as I think you would appreciate, um, appoints. Has the commission that exists and she wants their input, so before he goes through the whole process, if it means a week or two. To get their input, that's the mayor's preference. Now, obviously, again. You, you can take whatever vote you want, but obviously, you, I think you would prefer, I think we all would prefer not to have the mayor have to veto it. But saying that she just, she, she respects the people who are appointed and they feel strongly on it, so why don't we air it?
There's plenty of time for them to weigh in.
No, but.
And most of the members of the board initiated these changes.
Okay, that's.
So i- in the, in the last, I attended the last meeting, senior, um, or older persons, I'm sorry, advisory, elder adults advisory board. And it was discussed in this meeting and there was support for it. And which is why Councilwoman Scarpa brought this up in, under new business. So my understanding, based on the meaning that there was support for it, um, I read that email, I don't agree with a lot of it. Of what Mr. Bernstein said in there, um, in fact, well. Maybe we go into executive session about this, so we're not talking a, a, about it openly, but there are things that I disagree and words and terms that he used. Were just, just inaccurate, um, and he depicted Councilwoman Scarpa in, in a very unfair way, in my opinion. In that email, um, which isn't what happened at all, there's, there was a lot of support in my understanding again, because I was there for this. And there was discussion about it, um, so.
And I can talk a little bit, as I did with the mayor, when she called me about the rationale for it. In terms of expanding the board for two members, one of the members is a school person who doesn't get involved at all, except to coordinate. With the school, so we're down one member and one of the things we want to do is look to grant writing. And there was someone that I came in contact with, a senior who was very interested in that, who had some background in grant writing. So to me, it's, there's so much participation and so much interest in this committee. That it's only in our best interest to expand it by two members.
And it was a packed room, I mean, packed room, every chair was taken.
Yeah, the board wants to meet monthly, just like every other board meets. We have a real problem, I know, I want you to understand my rationale. We have a problem. I did, I, what, what I'm telling you, I told her on the phone, we discussed it. And the, the secretary needs to be appointed somehow, I suggested by the mayor, but it could be by anyone. We go around the room and the chair asks each of these old, older adults. Who will take the notes and nobody wants to take the notes, nobody feels comfortable to take the notes. This committee needs a secretary, I don't care who appoints it, but it needs a secretary. And last, but most importantly, is all, most of the people on this committee would like to vote for their own chair and vice chair. When the chair of the committee asked to be appointed for two years, everyone said no. There's so much interest, it's a matter of fairness, there's other people who would like a, a chance to be the chair and vice chair. So all four of these. Changes are changes that have been driven by the seniors that I'm in touch, I'm in touch with all the seniors, I go to the pool with them. I, they talk to me, they call me, these, and, and specifically seniors that are on that boards who are uncomfortable with some of the working.
Thank you, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Castelino.
I'd like to add to the conversation, so, so Councilman, I, I appreciate, you know, what you did with this, uh, board. And this was something that was in the works from Councilman Krokoviac and you advocated for it. And the whole reason that it didn't get support to this year was because the, um. Current mayor did support it, she did support it and the reason why it wasn't supported in years past, because the primary did want to. Make it too cumbersome for the staff. Because what these commissions do and Mr., uh, Bacon could attest to it, because he, uh, he is the, uh. He sits on the, uh, Public Relations Commission. They are, you know, our staff members are, are charged with tasks. That being said, um, I, again, the other, you're right, the other commissions meet monthly, whether that's feasible for. The staff to be there monthly, you know, that's up to the administration. But as far as the chairperson, all the other. Commissions that correctly went wrong, uh, are appointed by the mayor.
With the exception of the HRC, which was changed at the request of a council person.
No, no, it wasn't changed, that wasn't changed, so, so I.
Well, I would like to change, to change for all.
Okay, so it, it, so, and but it, but it, but again, okay, so again, so we're gonna take the commissions. Which are authorized by the mayor, we're once again, gonna go and, and tell the mayor how to do her job.
I think this committee would work better with.
Okay, because you don't care for the chairperson is, is what I'm hearing.
Person is excellent.
We can.
He's a very nice man and, and, and he contributes a lot, I did not say that at all. I said there are other people who want to turn, there are other seniors.
This, this committee just started a couple of months ago.
So, so that particular one, if the chair and the vice chair is the sticking point and the other three are not.
So the, the vice chair, you, so in the PRC, they voted the vice chair in. Now, I hear what you're saying about the secretary because no one wants to do the secretary's job. No, I don't care what committee you're on, no one wants to take those minutes. But the end of the day, someone in the room has to, you can't just assign somebody.
In fact, the person who is.
No, someone in the room should be doing it.
Person to be the secretary when his turn is up and he gives somebody else a turn.
But again, you're supposed to vote on it and work on it in your committee, you're the liaison to this. And, and, you know, all of us have said, um, liaison, this is your first year and, and Councilman, you're my lia, uh, you're my appointment for many.
How things have been the past, but I'm responsive to people who.
I, I, I know, but you have to have patience and you have to lead your committee and get them all to work together, Councilwoman.
Working together.
Well, then.
We've got like twenty-five people more on one of.
Then why can't someone take the notes? Because at the, in other commissions, you don't have to be a member of the commission.
Because it's difficult for them to pay attention and take notes at the same time.
Well, then help them, that's because I've done that before too.
Secretary, so they don't have to be covered.
Okay, so again, the discussion has, is duly noted, um, and the administration will govern themselves accordingly. Um, I call for the adjournment of the tonight's meeting, is there a second?
Take the motion that this goes on, on the next count for the next.
Uh, you've already heard from the administration that there are two. I understand, but you have heard your, your legal department has said that they're not going to deal with it. It has to go to the administration and to the legal department, but if they're not going to prioritize it, we can't dictate.
Prioritize it, there's no reason they can't prioritize it, they've had it since August twenty-first. There's three minor changes, there's nothing to prioritize, there's nothing difficult.
Can you speak to that then, sir?
You get it to me, I haven't seen it. Can't.
Would you send it to him? Everybody else has had it since August twenty-first.
Do my best to make sure that it's at least vetted, I understand.
I want it considered.
So you're gonna, so you're gonna, so you're doing this so the chair could be voted out and you vote somebody else? Well, then why are you doing it? Then why wouldn't you leave it?
Because I want it to be on and discussed in public, I want the seniors who asked me to make these changes to be able to weigh in. To come to public comment and talk about what they want.
Here's what's not fair, Councilwoman, you, you gotta give the committee a year, you really should give the committee a year because I.
This is not, none of these changes would take.
Not everybody on your commission feels.
Every change takes place immediately after the vote for any ordinance or resolution.
No, you really should give it a.
I, I'll call for the adjournment of our meeting this evening, is there a second?
Motion to put this on for first reading.
Okay, go ahead, make your.
I second it.
Let's vote on it.
Okay, go ahead. Um, Councilwoman Castelino.
No.
Councilwoman Gabor Michael.
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford.
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpa.
Yes.
Council President Williams.
I'm staying there. Adjournment of the meeting. All those in for you?
Hi.
Meeting is adjourned, we will see you next nineteenth, Tuesday, September nineteenth, West Orange. Thank you for your participation, it is eleven twenty-two and the meeting is formally adjourned, thank you and good night. Best of, uh, school days, first day of school, West Orange, enjoy.